Good morning, everyone. This is the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission. Thank you for joining us. And we begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me. Thank you, sir. That brings us to our coverage announcement. Mr. Villalobas, do you want to do that and proceed with the roll call after that?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County Santa Barbara television, CSB TV, Channel 20 at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Long Po, Standing In his Valley, San Maria, and Orchid areas. We broadcast Planning Commission hearings on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB TV, Channel 20. And this hearing will also be streamed live on the county's website and will be available for download in a day or two. Moving on to the roll call, Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
And Chair Bridley.
Vice Chair, but Chair for the moment, yes, here.
And we are expecting Commissioners Park and Martinez to join us shortly.
Thank you. Okay, without we move on to the agenda's Agenda Status Report, Secretary Wilson, can you lead us?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. In regards to the status of the agenda today, we have two items on the standard agenda. The first is the Nevada Question Facility, and then the second is the continued item of the Agriculture and Enterprise Ordinance Amendments. And staff and applicants are ready to present on both those items. Madam Chair, I can move to the projection report if you'd like.
Please.
So our next scheduled hearing won't be until February 28th. And on February 28th, we have an appeal of the El Capitan Canyon campground areas. And then we also have the 2023 Comprehensive Plan Annual Progress Report. And that location will be here in Santa Barbara. Following that, our next hearing will be on March 6th. And then we have three items on that. Appeal of a water well, an appeal of a residence, and then the Energy Element Amendments and Updates presented by Long-Wake Planning. And that will be here in Santa Barbara as well. As of right now, we have nothing projected for March 13th. It's tentatively scheduled to be in San Maria, but as of right now, no items are projected for that hearing. But we may want to keep it on the agenda just depending on how today goes and other hearings. Following that, we don't meet again until March 27th. We have the Housing Element Rezones on March 27th. And that will be here in Santa Barbara. And then, hold on one second. It's not on the projection report, but we're... Sorry. Semi-prepared. March 29th, we're looking at agendizing a special hearing, which will be a Friday for further hearings on the Housing Element Rezones. So we're trying to do three hearings in a row, which would be March 27th, which is a regularly scheduled hearing, March 29th, and then following Wednesday, which is April 3rd. So Madam Chair and Commissioners, we're looking for action from the Planning Commission today to set a special hearing on March 29th. If... We're hoping that the Commission were missing two, so they won't have a vote, but are available on Friday, the 29th, for that hearing. And then, just to conclude the projection report, April 10th, nothing's projected. And then April 24th, we don't have anything projected for that hearing either. So in regards to the projection report, we're looking at March 29th as a special hearing. That concludes the projection report. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do we want to make a motion and take care of that now, then? Do I hear anybody wanting to do that?
I'm willing to make the motion, but I think we should hold the matter open until our fellow Commissioners arrive, so we can have a unanimous vote.
Excellent. So let's trail that, too, a little bit later in the general business. I'm available, so... So far, so good. Okay, proceeding on with our agenda, then we go to our projection report you just covered, and then public comment. And this morning, I have two requests to speak under public comment. The first person is Kevin Snow. And these are four matters that are not otherwise agendized on our regular agenda. So if you're here for the NOVAD item or the Ag Enterprise Ordinance, you need to wait until we get to those items. I believe this is other public comment. Mr. Snow.
Yes, good morning, planning Commissioners. My name is Kevin Snow. I've been involved in Montecito Trails Foundation for many, many years. And I'm also a First District Appointed to the County Riding and Hiking Trails Advisory Committee, known as CRATAC, for some over 20 years. And the issue or problem that I'd like to talk about today is the planned closure of the Tunnel Trail by Southern California Edison. As you know, the pandemic has demonstrated the incredible public health benefit of access to public hiking trails. And this really cannot be overstated. The problem with the closure of the Tunnel Trail is, in addition to the closure of trails in Montecito, the Montecito Romero Jeepway Trail, and also Sandy Seadrove, it creates an enormous impact to thousands of people that use that trail every day. I was up there yesterday at 5:00, just to check to see if there was a sign indicating that the trail was going to be closed. And there was none. And there were no less than 15 people coming down the trail, an additional 15 to 20 cars parked along tunnel. And this was late in the day, at 5:00. And so it's very concerning to the trails community that this trail will be closed for so many days and so many months. Now, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife has completed an environmental document related to the damage caused by Edison when they tried to clear the road and threw all the cast over the side. And so this six-month closure is about them trying to get down there and pick up all that overcast and clean up the road. But the problem is that the Fish and Wildlife document simply, basically ignores the impact to public recreation by closing the trail for so long, and provides no mitigation for the displacement of that many trail users. So CRATAC sent a detailed letter to Planning and Development, which you should have had, and I have a copy to give you today in case you didn't get it, requesting assistance from PND about this matter.
Mr. Snow, we're getting to the end of your public comment period, so can you wrap that up?
Yeah, well, we just would...
And we did receive the letter, thank you.
We would just hope that, one, they would notice the trailhead, that you would direct PND and Parks Department to get together with Fish and Wildlife to do that, to restart the 30-day comment period, to hold an evening public hearing, so that the public can have some comment on this. And finally, that there would be some kind of discussion for reasonable and proportionate mitigation measures, such as shortening the closure period and what other contribution Edison can make to the public for their damage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Snow. Our next speaker under public comment, and we do have a three-minute guideline, is Otis Kayla.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Otis Kayla. I'm Chair of CRATAC, the County Riding and Hiking Trails Advisory Committee. I'm here to speak about the Housing Element and Impacts on Public Recreation. The county seems pulled in two directions. The county has spent $1 million on the Recreation Master Plan to promote public recreation, which will be completed too late to affect the Housing Element proposals. At some time, the Housing Element is... At the same time, the Housing Element is taking away or undermining all the key tools the county has historically used to acquire new parks, recreation, and trails over the last 30-plus years. And they're putting nothing in its place to provide for these public amenities. Over the last 30 years or more, the county has obtained from development over 850 acres of open space, of public open space, four public parks, 25 miles of trails, including Orchid Community Park and the Orchid Hills Trail System, the vast majority of such improvements in the county. The Housing Element proposes no plan on how to meet the demand for 84 to 193 acres of new public parks to serve Housing Element residents, nor how to meet demand for 36 to 108 miles of new trails. And these are standards that are recommended and proposed by CRATAC that are... They're in a letter. You've been given a packet of maps and a letter from CRATAC that pretty carefully analyzes the EIR. CRATAC will propose a series of amendments to the County Parks Recreation and Trails Maps for consideration by your commission to at least partially meet this incremental demand for public recreation. And we've provided you on these maps, there are... We're beginning outlining possibilities for trails there. CRATAC's proposal for new service... We're proposing a new service standard for public trails, and that's highlighted on pages nine and 10 of the EIR analysis. CRATAC was underwhelmed by the EIR's analysis of impacts to public recreation and very concerned over the completely inadequate mitigation proposed to address these impacts. There's one, and it's a sort of might be or should. Our initial recommended changes to mitigation are highlighted on pages five and six of the letter that we have submitted to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kayla. We did receive the letter, thank you. And spurs a lot of discussion, but we're not agendized for it this morning, so thank you very much. Okay, moving on our agenda, we come to the Planning Commissioners' informational reports. Does anyone have anything to share? See, now, this is where I need guidance. I look at the red thing on... Oh, there we go. Commissioner Park.
It is kind of tricky. You've got to get used to it.
I look over there. I'm used to the gizmos here. Oh, well.
There you go. Well, Commissioner Martinez just looks at me and says, okay, I'll have him go last, but I know he's going to say something, so he doesn't even need to see if the lights lit. Anyway, I enjoyed the report that we had at our last hearing from Commissioner Martinez and Commissioner Reed about attending an event regarding agriculture and proposed Levy Trail, things like that. And in that vein, Commissioner Reed and I attended the recent Ag Forum, I believe it was last Wednesday, that was put on by the Econ Alliance. We were guests of the Grower Shippers Association, Claire Wyman, which I really appreciated. We saw at least three members of the Board of Supervisors there, and I don't... There may have been other planning commissioners. The reason I'm bringing it up is, one, it's a fascinating thing because the change in agriculture in this county is occurring at a rapid, rapid pace. And showing that is that we received report from Mr. Chang, our Ag Commissioner, that we had over $2 billion in direct revenues for agriculture in the last measurable period. And they project that that comes out to an effect on the local economy of two to three times that, which is astonishing. It's our largest employer in this county. I will, in speeches, talk about we're the Silicon Valley of agriculture. And it's proof that we are, because we have the widest crop diversity of any county right here. And the science and technology that goes on in it is fascinating. I think Commissioner Reed, remember that video of the robot cultivator going down the rows at night with blue light, killing pests or ultraviolet light, that kind of thing? Why is this relevant to us today? We spend a lot of time on the Ag Enterprise Ordinance, which I know can be frustrating. We have to have patience. And a lot of that has been in listening to the Ag Advisory Committee about their suggestions. And we need to realize that, as important as Ag Enterprise Ordinance is to other Ag people, we've got this giant industry that we don't want to undermine, so we want to hear them very carefully. Okay? And also, of course, the AAC is a government body here. And so it's a little bit different than other folks coming up and speaking in public comment to the podium. So we're going to get through it. We're going to get through the AEO. But please understand, there's a bigger issue there. And why would we be important to that larger Ag industry, the Grower Shippers? Well, what we're doing with Ag Tourism will help brand the county as the premium place for agriculture. And it's also a way of educating decision-makers and the public on the South Coast that we have this tremendous industry just across the hills and how important it is to us. So there you go, sorry.
Well, good morning. I finally made it. Unfortunately, they shut down the freeway on me on Los Alamos for about 20 minutes, but I'm here. I don't know... I'm going to ask...
We were in informational reports, Chair Martinez. And I actually have something to add. Well, different topic.
Please do.
Just that, I don't know how I stumbled upon it, but I found a very interesting recording of the California Coastal Commission in December. I think they jammed it onto their last meeting of the year regarding housing in the coastal zone. I don't know if staff saw it, but I'm only halfway through it, and I'm taking copious notes, because it seems to be the point at which that very powerful commission is realizing that some of this housing press has to be in their jurisdiction. And for decades, they weren't very favorable about housing in the coastal zone. We suffered through that. So anyway, when I get done with it, maybe I'll give you another thing, or maybe I'll just add the link to give it to David, and he can share it. It's for y'all in the inland area, maybe not, but we always hear about the coastal zone having, you know, that actually affects the kinds of work products that I know PND decides to go after, is if you have a coastal commission approval of it. And that's never an assumed approval. So that was it. Very interesting.
Okay. And anyone else? Any other Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to alert you and Commissioner Park to the fact that we had presented earlier in our opening matters the possibility of scheduling a special meeting on the Housing Element. And those of us who are here indicated their availability, but I didn't want there to be a motion prior to the five of us all weighing in on the date. It was the 29th of March, which would be the middle of three consecutive meetings on the Housing Element.
And that's a Friday? I mean, that works... I know that actually works for me personally, but... Anyone else? Well, the only one would be Commissioner Park, I guess.
You know, I have such a boring life, I don't even have to look at my calendar if it's not a Wednesday. So, sure, why not?
So in that light, I take it, then, do we really need a motion, or do we just give direction to staff? We need a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we do need a motion to set that special hearing for March 29th at 9:00 a.m. here in Santa Barbara.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cooney, if I could have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Bridley? And then I'll just... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So I take it, then, that staff will give public notice of that, and for the public, they'll be informed of their ability to participate and whether Zoom will be available or not. I imagine it will be. But, okay, great. And so let's move on to item number eight on the agenda, which is the minutes for January 31, 2024, for consideration and approval. Do we have any comments from the Commissioners? Commissioner Cooney?
Mr. Chair, I'm setting a new standard for review of the minutes since our clerk stuck in a flaw in his last set of minutes. But honestly, I tried and could not find anything wrong with these, so I'd move approval of the minutes of the hearing of January 31st.
And do I have a second from any other Commissioner?
I'll second.
Commissioner Reed? Okay, and I'll just, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so that's unanimous. And let's move on to item number nine, which is the Director's Report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I just wanted to remind everybody about our assistance for people who have damage along creeks. I'm kind of trying to remind everybody during this winter season. We have another storm coming up, so we have Petra Leva serving as the ombuds person that helps people navigate the permit process. So it's just a reminder, if you've had difficulty on your property due to storms, we're here to help. You can find it on our website regarding winter storms, and we can connect you with local agencies and state agencies to make sure that any work you need to do is addressed properly. So we do have another storm coming, as I said, so we just want to make sure you all know, and then you can share that with the community. Onto the Housing Element. So we are trying to move the process as quickly as we can and get it to the board as quickly as we can. We'd like to get the rezones up to them, you know, we were hoping maybe late April. So that's why we're having a special hearing on the 29th. If we can get it done in two hearings, that would be great. And it gives us a little bit more time to get prepped for the board. But we are going to keep all three scheduled on the calendar. We will fully notice everybody for every hearing. They'll have an opportunity to provide public comment. And in advance of those hearings, we are having this developer workshop, which we've talked about, which is something that the board requested. They want an opportunity for some of the developers in the community, and this is going to be focused on the South Coast, to be able to present the projects that they have identified. Some of them are builders' remedy projects, and some are not. But they include the developers from all of the agricultural parcels that have submitted something, and that's Glen Annie, Caird, Georgie, Montessori, Semperus Growers, and then also Tatum is going to be included, and Baylor, Dan and Carpenteria is going to be included. It looks like St. and Athanasius is trying to put something together, and they would like to be included as well. So that will be in this hearing room, and the board will hear presentations from the development community. They'll each have 10 minutes. And then we're going to have tables set up out in the lobby. And the developers will be able to have information and boards that represent their project, so that the public can walk through and look at all of the projects and ask questions. Then, after that, we'll do that for about 45 minutes or something, the development community and the public and the board will come back into this hearing room, and there will be public comment. So it's really a workshop. There's not going to be any direction provided. The board may ask questions, but it's just an opportunity to learn about what these projects include in terms of public benefit. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that. It's going to be in the afternoon around 2:00, I think.
Which date?
It'll be Wednesday... Or, I'm sorry, Thursday, March 19th. Oh, no, it's Tuesday. I'm sorry, that's a Tuesday. It's after the board meeting. We've gone back and forth on many dates, trying to find the right one.
What'd you say, the board meeting, after our meeting?
No, it's Tuesday.
Okay.
And so it's after the board has a meeting in the morning up in their chambers, and then this... They will come down here in the afternoon and have the workshop. Mr. Chair, I do... Well, I think there are a couple of people that have questions about it.
Commissioner Bridley?
So the workshop, the presentation, the public review of the display boards, et cetera, and then coming back and public comment. And then, will the board ask developers for any responses to that? Or do you think you're going to have enough time to have some response? I mean...
You know, I think if there are specific questions to them, I would encourage the community to ask when they're walking through. But I don't see a reason why they wouldn't be able to provide a brief response. But it's... And the board may ask questions after that. But it's pretty informal, I would say.
Okay. I...
But the public will have a limited... They'll have the regular amount of time to speak.
And so the Commissioners are encouraged to attend this, I think, right? Because when it comes to us, you know, on the dates that we have on our projection report, there's, I think what you said at the last time, the last meeting was, there would be like a three-minute presentation by each applicant-developer at the most. And then we would roll up our sleeves and go through a list and work with a balancing tool and come up with a recommendation for the rezone. So there's far less presentation to the Planning Commission really ever, until any case comes back for discretionary entitlement. So things like apartments, we don't see again, right? I mean...
In some cases. It's not all cases, but yes, in some cases, that's true. So I do, I think this is a great opportunity for the Commission to be able to observe what is included in these projects and what they're proposing, to give you some information to help you make your decisions and your recommendations.
And I just have one last comment, is that when the email blasts have come out about the environmental impact report progress and things, they've come out pretty late. Like, I got the one about the meeting on the draft document eight hours before it started. So I'm hoping that maybe those email blasts can go out, I don't know, three to five days ahead of time or something, because I know it's an email blast, so if you can just put that in the schedule, hopefully that'll help.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Commissioner Cooney? Okay. Then Commissioner Park?
Well, as usual, my questions range from the stupidly simple to the vague and impossible to understand. Let me start with the stupidly simple one. It seems to me that that workshop will be kind of a SRO thing. I mean, there'll be a lot of folks trying to pack into this room, and I'd like to be one of them. I think Commissioner Bridley would be, too, and others. And is it possible, given our great social status, that we could have some reserved seats somehow, so that we could get in here?
Commissioner Park through the chair. I don't see a problem with that. Yeah, we can put you guys in the front row.
You could peg it to my age. I don't know about her, but, you know, in hearing. Okay. Now, on the other end of the spectrum for my questions, I think this is a great idea because just in the normal course of things, I've gotten pretty familiar with the major projects. The ones that are like 1,000 units and very vigorously represented. I know less about them like Tatum and Montessori, so I look forward to hearing that. But I noted that Supervisor Capps wrote what I thought was a very well-drafted and thought-provoking discussion of county properties. I thought so, anyway. And I want to follow up on that in my thinking when we use the balancing tool. And I'd asked you, Director Plowman, at our last hearing, you know, what if we came up with other properties that haven't been discussed, but, you know, people wonder. And, you know, an example of that is the little nine-hole golf course at Mer Mesa, which I know hasn't operated for a couple of years, and, you know, has that looked at, and that kind of thing. But what Commissioner Capps focused on was county properties. And I don't understand, under the balancing tool, how do we plug those in? Are we able to plug those in?
So Commissioner Park through the chair. I think we're not in a position to be adding new sites unless the board directs a delay and additional environmental review. So that is probably not going to be their recommendation, would be my guess. I think they want to get through this process. But county-owned sites, and I think Supervisor Capps is... But county-owned sites, and I think Supervisor Capps's guest editorial or opinion piece was focused on the workforce housing study.
Yeah.
Which is going to identify county-owned sites that are for the long term. You know, there'll be, there'll be the shorter term, which are the nine sites that are in the housing element, and then the longer-term sites that can be identified for possible conversion. So my guess is that that workforce housing study is going to be like a 20-year timeframe, that these sites will be, the other sites that get identified will be considered later. And in the balancing act tool, county-owned sites can be selected or deselected. So you pick them to help develop the housing plan that satisfies RENA, or not pick them. You know, it'll be the recommendations that come from you, and then they'll go to the board.
So we do have those...
There are nine.
Eligible sites that are there.
Yeah.
But then other sites that were mentioned, such as, you know, our parking lot, like here, which I doubt is one of those sites.
Right.
That's a different thing. Okay, that makes, that helps.
And we had parameters, right, from the state, that they needed to be viable within the next eight years. So that's why, like, a site here, which, you know, in 10 or 15 years, if this building is torn down, engineering building, then, and the human resources building is torn down, the site would be a great site for housing, but it's just not in the timeframe for this cycle. So I think that's why that site will probably be included in the workforce housing study that the community services department is working on.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Reed?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I have a quick question in regards to your first topic, which is about if there's concerns regarding work on a creek side. Where would the, where would the public look to?
So, yes, Mr. Chair, they can go to our website, and on the left-hand side, there's a, I guess, ribbon or column, and at the bottom of that, it says "Winter Storm Information," and they just click on that, and it'll take them to the page and give them information about what to do.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Couple other things that I want to talk about was the board took action yesterday on the housing bill ordinance that the commission had heard and approved that. So those will be incorporated into our code. And then in terms of future board items, we have the small cell wireless on Camino Mayorca appeal. That's on March 5th. And then the key site H development agreement will be on March 12th. And we discussed the rezon workshop for the board, and then the music academy appeal will be on May 7th. It got postponed, I think they're trying to work something out. May 7th, yeah. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Seeing no light on, I take it then, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
And then I take it we will go to the item 10 on our agenda, which is the standard agenda.
The following is a hearing on the request of River and Ranch LLC to consider case number 21 DVP 24, 21 CUP 26, and adoption of the mitigated negative declaration, case number 23 NGD 10, and mitigation monitoring program contained in the conditions of approval.
Okay, and I think this, well, is this a time where, well, my question is, is for ex-party communications, I would ask any commissioners in regards to revealing those. Commissioner Park?
Yes, I've had some, recently, I had a site visit along with Commissioner Reed at the site, and that was with Mr. Jones, the agent for the applicant, and then applicant herself, Lisa Novat. I've also had discussions with various folks over the years about this. Can't remember them all, but I know I had lunch with Ms. Novat about 18 months, two years ago, where I first heard about the project and her vision about this.
Thank you, Commissioner Park, Commissioner Bradley?
I also had a site visit with the agent and Ms. Novat on Monday, two days ago, and enjoyed hearing their vision and enjoyed seeing the site. It was great to get out of the office.
And seeing no other lights on, then I take it we can move on to staff report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Tina Mitchell. Today, I'll be presenting the Novat Equestrian Facility Project, which includes a development plan and conditional use permit for a commercial equestrian facility that will provide daily boarding and breeding operations, and will host up to 12 special events annually if approved. The project site is a 63.35 acre parcel located at 750 East Highway 246 on the stretch of highway between Bulton and Solving. The parcel is zoned Ag 140, and all surrounding parcels are also agriculturally zoned. The general area is characterized by pastures, equestrian uses, vineyards, low-density residential uses, and the Santina's River abuts the southern property line of the project site. So a little bit of site background, the project site currently has nine fenced pastures that have historically been used to keep horses and other livestock. The property has been under a Williamson Act Ag Preserve contract since the late 70s. So APAC did review this project and determined that the project is consistent with the county's uniform rules. There's about 13,800 square feet of existing structural development, including residential and agricultural structures. And as was previously mentioned, the Santina's River is directly south of the parcel, and there are flood hazard areas on this parcel that I'll go over in a minute when we look at the site plan. The proposed project includes several new structures to support the equestrian facility, including a covered riding arena, a reception hall, a future ag employee dwelling, six 20-stall horse barns, and uncovered riding areas. Switch to the site plan really quick to show you the locations of these. So here, we have the covered riding arena. Here are the uncovered riding areas. Here are the six 20-stall horse barns. These two are existing barns. Up here, we have the proposed reception hall, and it's located near existing residential structures. And then the proposed future ag employee dwelling. The green zigzag lines that you see on the site plan are showing the flood areas of the parcel. So everything south of this zigzag line, so going this way, is the regulatory floodway. And then everything north of this line, south of this line, so this middle section, is the special flood hazard areas. So we do have some structures proposed in the flood hazard areas, and they are subject to applicable requirements by the Flood Control Division. And Flood Control did review this project, their condition letter is attached to the staff report. Switching back to the project description, daily operations will include boarding and breeding of up to 75 horses, and the facility will be open to scheduled visits between 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM. There will be up to eight employees performing daily feeding, watering, manure cleanup, exercising horses, and general maintenance. And there will be no daily training or riding lessons. Finally, the facility would host up to 12 special events annually, with six of the events being larger, multi-day events with up to 250 guests, and the remaining six events being smaller, single-day events with up to 150 guests. There would be up to 25 employees during special events, and all amplified noise and lighting would end by 10:00 PM. Special events will include equestrian events, like educational events, shows and clinics, or non-equestrian events, like receptions, parties, weddings, or similar events. In terms of permit requirements, the Land Use and Development Code requires a conditional use permit for equestrian facilities and associated events in the Ag One Zone District, and a development plan when there's 20,000 or more square feet of structural development on lots owned Ag One. Here are a couple site photos of the property. The first one is looking south toward the pasture areas, and the second is looking at an existing barn. This barn is actually going to be demolished, and the new reception hall will be placed in the same general location. The proposed project is consistent with all LUDC requirements, including setbacks, height limits, parking, and screening requirements. Two modifications are being requested that are related to the parking areas that will be used for special events. So I want to take a minute to explain how parking will work during special events. There will be 10 standard paved parking spaces near the reception hall, but all other parking areas for special events will be temporary and located in open pasture areas that will just be left as their natural grade. The applicant has identified approximately 6.4 acres of open pasture areas on the site plan that can accommodate parking for a 250-person event, including horse trailers and event staff. So the two modifications would waive requirements for landscape islands and paving and striping for those temporary parking areas, since they will only be used for the 12 special events. Both APAC and staff are supportive of the requested modifications because they will allow for the agricultural pasture use to continue when events aren't occurring. The project is within the Santina's Valley Community Plan area and is consistent with the community plan policies and development standards, as well as the comprehensive plan policies. The staff report includes a detailed consistency analysis of all applicable policies and further discussion of the modification requests. Environmental review for the project was processed with a mitigated negative declaration in compliance with CECL requirements. Significant but mitigable impacts were identified for visual resources, bioresources, cultural resources, geology, land use, noise, public facilities, transportation, and water resources and flooding. During the public review period, staff received comments from CDFW and the Department of Conservation that were addressed in the final MND. And a total of 24 mitigation measures have been applied as conditions of approval. Impacts during the construction phase will be mitigated with design review, tree protection and replacement requirements, pre-construction wildlife surveys, bio-monitoring, erosion control, proper equipment storage, and cultural resource monitoring. And then impacts during the operational phase will be mitigated with implementation of an animal waste management plan, noise limitations for special events, and a parking and traffic control plan for special events. In conclusion, the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the Santina's Valley Community Plan, and the LUDC. Therefore, staff recommends that the commission make the required findings for approval of the project, adopt the MND and mitigation monitoring program, and approve the project, including the requested modifications subject to the conditions set forth in attachments B1 and B2 of the staff report. The full text of staff's recommendation is shown here on the slide. This will conclude staff's presentation. We're available for any questions, and we have the applicant, Ms. Novat, and her representatives, Mr. Jones and Mr. Statler, available for questions as well.
Well, thank you for that report, and commissioners, any questions? Mr. Reed?
I noticed that this handout we got relative to your presentation lacks two of the pages you showed on the screen about all the numbers of structures, although they're available in the report. But I just wondered if we might get that as a handout. I don't think it's necessary, but I just, I found it interesting.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it could just be because there's animation on the slides, so...
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Reed, it flattens it when you make it a PDF, so it just kind of gets rid of that. But all that information is on the staff report.
I know, that explains why there were two sets of pages, four and five.
Commissioner Park?
Yes, I have a number of questions. I found some ambiguities in the project description that I'd like to clear up. And one was the reference to two kinds of events. One was up to 250 people, and those were described as sometimes three-and-a-half-day events, it'd be like a horse show. And then there was a reference to one-day events, and I think from memory, the limit there was at 120, 125, something like that. And there were examples given of certain events that would be non-acquest, and I don't remember what they all were. One that I remember very well, because it's such an explosive subject in the 3rd district right now, is weddings. And I did not see some limit on what could be in the larger events. So it looked to me, even though weddings were used as an example, for the one-day, 125-day, 125 attendees, that there was no limit in that project description to having a 250-person attendee wedding. And so I can kind of guess at what the intent is, but it's more important that we have a very specific project description that people can look at years from now and understand. So I wonder, Ms. Mitchell, if you can first tell us, what is the limit to number of people for special events in this thing?
Commissioner Park through the chair, yes, we can clarify on that, and it might be helpful to go to our slide with that information if we want to pull up the staff report, there we go. So yeah, 250-person events, there would be six of those, and we didn't specify it very clearly in the project description, but the applicant's intent, my understanding, is for those to be equestrian events, the multi-day events. And then the smaller, single-day events could be equestrian, but they also have the option for those to be weddings or other non-equestrian events.
Okay, so the project description could be fine-tuned to make it more specific in that regard. And you did use the term "special events" in your presentation. Could you elaborate on what those could include under the, I guess it's under both the CUP and the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, Commissioner Park through the chair. Are you just asking, like, what types of events that are non-equestrian?
That's right. Is it anything at all in the galaxy of what human beings do in the world? Or is it certain things that are spelled out in the CUP and the zoning ordinance?
If it fits within the parameter of, you know, the limits that we have on special events, I think they can propose something, but maybe Travis, you know...
What are the limits of what we have on special events?
Commissioner Park, can you guys hear me? Okay, through the chair. So they couldn't, for example, propose a carnival, because that is another permitted use that they would have to get a permit for. They couldn't do a rodeo through this. The special events would just simply allow the types of uses that we've generally outlined, weddings and parties. But if it's, if it's an event that is a listed use that needs a permit, they'd have to get a permit for that, because they haven't asked for that in this CUP.
Right, but do we, do we have further specification than these examples that are in the project description for this project? Or is there some definition in the LUDC of what a special event is, it doesn't need a permit?
We can look, I know it is not a listed use, special events is not a listed use in our code, and that is an issue, it really is. But we can look to see if it is defined, I don't think that it is, but we can get back to you on that.
Yeah, it's seeming a little fuzzy to me. Okay, now getting on to, also in the project description, there's a reference to this being a boarding facility for retired horses, okay? And then there's also a reference to it being a breeding and boarding facility. I think even training facility. But then there's a reference in there that this will only be used for boarding, uh, retired horses. And I couldn't quite understand, then what does it really mean? I mean, is, 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 is there going to be training? Is it allowed? Is breeding allowed? Is, is, is boarding other horses than retired horses allowed? Uh, or, or is it not?
Uh, Commissioner Park through the chair, uh, that language, like, about it being a retirement facility, that was what we were given from the applicant. Um, but maybe they can elaborate more on what their intent is for types of horses, but in terms of the project description and, and this permit, I think we would be okay with it being retired or non-retired. Um, that wouldn't affect anything on our end. Um, what else? Um, in terms of training, um, facility, we limited it to scheduled visits only intentionally, because if there was daily riding and training lessons, it was going to push us into environmental impacts and a higher sequoia document for, um, traffic and air quality. So that was why it was pulled back to scheduled visits only.
Now, a scheduled visit means I make an appointment to come visit my retired horse? Or does it mean I make an appointment to, uh, take that horse, put it in the arena, and have a horseback lesson? Still scheduled?
Uh, Commissioner Park through the chair, yeah, it needs to be scheduled in advance to come, you know, visit the horse, that's the intent, yeah.
Okay, I, I'm. Yeah, the Novats are incredibly generous people in, in wanting to do this, because it's, it's, uh, it's, it's going to make a real impact on the equestrian community throughout Southern California, frankly, it'll be really important. And, uh, I think they've been eager to get this done. It's taken about four years, is what I heard, to get it done. Um, but when I look at it, I see a few things that I think would be consistent with what they're doing and not necessarily cause much impact, and one is uh, the daily training, the horses are basically already there. Uh, and, um, why can't they come in for a scheduled lesson in the arena? Uh, I, I think that's, that gives the Novats more flexibility, and it's the kind of thing that happens, frankly, in every single uh, uh, conditional use permit for commercial operation in an Ag One zone, which are usually smaller parcels. So i- is that something we could include, uh, scheduled training visits? Be specific about it.
Uh, Commissioner Park through the chair, um, I do not see that as a land use regulatory re- uh, requirement that the department would put on it. I think if it's, uh, it is a conditional use permit, so you have discretion, and I think that's something you could ask of the applicant. I don't see, I don't, do not think that is a requirement, though, in our code.
Okay, well, then I, I will ask the applicant, I would bet they'd say yes, but I want to allow them to have those training. Uh, and then, um, the, uh, reference to retired horses, I, I know that was in the uh, uh, in, in the project description. I think it would benefit the project and the Novats to have, uh, complete flexibility on, on boarding any kind of horse that somebody wants to board there. Uh, and, and sometimes you get into retired and labels like that, and, and you wonder what they mean. I mean, I, I rode my last endurance race on my horse Remington, and he was the age of thirty. Okay, and I retired him from that sport. And then he went on to lead multi-day expeditions through the wilderness for the Botanic Garden Survey and other things. And so you'd say, was that a retired horse? Was that not a retired horse? But, you know, I, I would, I would want that flexibility, and if the horse is going to be there anyway, whether it's retired and whether it's a thirty-year-old horse or a fifteen-year-old horse, it's not going to make much difference in the environmental impact. So can we explicitly loosen that up so they could board, uh, horses that aren't just retired?
Commissioner Park, uh, we, we have no issues with that either, and in fact, I'm not sure our enforcement would even know how to enforce whether a horse is retired or not.
You couldn't ask them.
I think we could certainly ask the applicant if they are willing to, um, you know, sort of loosen that up, but I, we have no issues at staff level at all.
One, one, one more little push there is, um, you know, I'm very familiar with, with, with horse events, just my own things, and even dog shows, which are kind of similar in some senses. And, and people often will come in, uh, uh, well, to horse shows in living quarters trailers, and, uh, uh, and they'll park in that parking lot, they're all self-contained. And, uh, uh, and they might stay the night in the living quarters trailer, because they can check their horses, get their tack ready, and get ready for the show. And, and they like it because they don't have to get an Uber or a taxi or something to go to a hotel. Uh, and, um, it, it, it just works better. And, and, and I would imagine that as people pull up into that parking area with their living quarters trailers for the three-day horse shows, some of them would think they're going to be able to spend the night. They'd be kind of shocked to be told, oh, no, you gotta go get a taxi to go over to that motel three miles away. I'm thinking, well, if we're trying to limit G H Gs and traffic, aren't we better allowing some, you know, self-contained camping and those kinds of units in the parking lot? Is, is there a way we can a- allow that flexibility here?
Uh, Commissioner Park through the chair, so that was something that was discussed early on in this project. Um, and they wanted to wrap in with the project description, and we analyzed it, and there wasn't an allowed use in the land use development code that really covered that use for Ag One, so that's why it was pulled out.
Uh, Chair, or Commissioner Park, yeah, I think, um, so this is where we get into our, you know, picky land use stuff. This is a lodging use, if you're allowing overnight accommodations, and it's just not allowed at this point, and I, I think even, that's maybe part of the Ag ordinance, I, I'm not quite sure, but yeah, it's just, we couldn't find a path to allow that type of use at this time in the Ag One zone.
Okay, and you've just referred to, kind of leading into my next question, and ma- and making the obvious point. This is an Ag One property, it's not Ag Two, so people need to realize this is not under the Ag Enterprise Ordinance and those uses. Okay, it, it may, in fact, uh, be eligible for some very important benefits under the Rec Master Plan in a year or two, if, if they want to participate. And so I'm, I'm thinking, is, it's taken them four years to get here. If, if they want to modify their C U P in a, let's say, a year or two, uh, seeing what comes in under, under these different ordinances that get changed, and, and, and we have experience with the facility, and we can see, okay, is this going to cause a problem or not? Do they have to still go through a four-year process, or is it a, is it a quicker process where they could request a modification to deal with other uses and maybe even a camping or something?
Uh, Commissioner Park through the chair, um, it really depends on what they're proposing, uh, of what type of amendment or revision we would be looking at if it would go to the planning commission, but I would anticipate that it would be a shorter process, um, yeah.
Agreed, yeah, it just depends on the scope, you know, if it's fitting within something that's minor, we would do some sort of minor amendment to the C U P.
Our, our, uh, m- m- my impression was that most of the commercial facility, commercial equestrian activities in Ag One properties came about through minor C U Ps, not major.
That's correct.
So what made this a major C U P?
Uh, Commissioner Park through the chair, it, it's a conditional use permit for equestrian facilities in Ag One, that's the permit level.
Oh, so it's, it's, it's not a minor or a major, it's just a, it's what it is.
It's major, yeah, um, perhaps you're thinking of special events, uh.
No, I was saying, you know, th- this is something that's getting a lot of discussion in District Three right now, and specifically with Commissioner, I mean Supervisor Hartman, who generally favors liberalizing the zoning code with reference to commercial activities on, excuse me, commercial equestrian activities on, on Ag One parcels, because there's a lot of twenty-acre parcels and so forth, where they'd like to, you know, have ten stalls for boarding, allow training and, and things like this. And it's gotten very acute, because we're getting this influx from Wellington, Florida of folks that want to have polo facilities and polo horses and trainers and all that into the Santina's Valley. And so they're all kind of running into this thing about, well, we're only allowed X on, on, on Ag One. So, okay, thanks a lot.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I, I just want to respond to, uh, my fellow commissioners', um, laundry list of additional uses, uh, Ms. Mitchell made clear, I think, at the start, that, um, there were some uses proposed which were pulled out because they were going to involve additional environmental review. And, um, and my concern is that, um, and, and we can discuss it later on in terms of deliberations, but when it starts getting loose and, uh, and tolerant, I think sometimes there's a temptation to lessen environmental review. And we, as a commission, are obligated, uh, to, uh, be very careful with any development uh, in terms of its impact on the environment. So, um, I, I hearken back to Ms. Mitchell's statement, and I'm sure the applicants uh, have, have discussed this, uh, with, um, staff, uh, that everything that is done for every other, uh, use in, in the Santina's Valley to protect the environment be applied here as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney, um, any other comments, Mr. Reed?
Hi, well, I was, uh, fortunate to be able to visit the site along with Commissioner Park and was impressed with the, just kind of the beauty of the location and, uh, the condition of the pastures and everything. And, uh, appreciate the fact we were also able to view, uh, the site of the proposed reception hall and the story poles indicating it essentially occupies most of the footprint of a, of an existing barn. Uh, I do have a question first, relative to the number of events. So we have six large-scale events, equestrian events a year, six smaller-scale events, and all of the weddings, parties, et cetera, would come out of the six smaller allocations, so there's a total of twelve, that's correct? Okay, thank you. Uh, secondly, when we looked at the, uh, the lines, uh, the, 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 examined the, the reception hall, and, uh, I later, you know, looked at the, the plans, and looks like a beautiful building on the outside, uh, great design. Uh, looking at the interior, when we were on-site, I did have a question about the kitchen area, was that going to be a, an operating professional kitchen? And the answer was, it would be, and as, as it says here, of a staging area and prep area for caterers on-site. Yet, when I look at the detail of, uh, the reception hall in Attachment Two, it does indicate within that kitchen area, uh, the presence of cooktops, ovens, uh, exhaust hood, et cetera. Uh, so are those just, for example, where they might be positioned if at a later time they elected to put in the professional kitchen?
Um, Commissioner Reed through the chair, um, I think, yeah, I guess I would defer to the applicant on that one, um, what their plans are for that, but.
Well, in any event, I could see it would have great utility as a, as a, as a site to supplement the activities in the equestrian events, but just like to know, are they going to do the kitchen now or later? Uh, next, I just, with respect to the composted manure, are they going to build that site? What's the ultimate disposition of the manure after it's composted? Is it used on-site as a soil amendment and a- applied, uh, in the pastures, or is it sold or otherwise exported? That's an additional question, final, final one. And again, I'll just go back and say I find it, I have a lot of sympathy for the applicant to have gone to, by looking at the volume of these materials, the time and great expense to, uh, achieve what to the perhaps casual observer, uh, approval to conduct what seems to be, uh, frequent and characteristic to the general area. But here's the last one. I noticed, uh, there's a January second, uh, of this year letter from California Department of Fish and Wildlife relative to the mitigated negative declaration. I'd just like to know if the issues raised and the recommendations, recommendations made have been addressed and incorporated into the, the mitigated, uh, declaration. Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner Reed through the chair, I'll start with that last question, yes, uh, the C D F W comments were incorporated into the final, uh, M N D that is with the staff report. So those were addressed, and we have a condition of approval that requires the applicant to get any necessary permits with state agencies. Um, for the question about manure, um, it's our understanding that it will be used on-site after composting, um, but I would defer to the applicant if they want to elaborate further on that. And then I think we answered the question on the kitchen, it's just defer to the applicant on what their plans are for that.
And I can add some clarifying information on the kitchen, too. Uh, ultimately, E H S is also reviewing party, and so if the kitchen approaches their, their definition of a commercial kitchen, then they would have to amend, uh, their project description and get approvals from E H S as well.
Okay, thank you, just, as far as commercial kitchens, my background is a bacteriologist. I like commercial kitchens wherever they can get them, because I think it improves food quality and food safety rather than transport from a remote site. I just wanted some clarity on that.
Chair Martinez?
Yes.
Um, if I could address the commission, I, I just kind of want to talk about special events, um, based on some of the questions we've had. Um, because I, I concur that this is a very tricky and difficult situation, and we've been dealing with this in the department for a few years now. The winery ordinance allows special events, um, and a winery can get twelve special events, uh, with their permit. It doesn't define what an especial event is. When we're looking through the code, there's no definition for special events. Um, there is something called reception facility in the temporary use section, and it lists exactly as we listed it in this project description. It talks about receptions, parties, weddings, or other similar events. So this department has been permitting special events under that general sort of listing of those uses pretty universally. I understand that it is not super specific, um, but we have no real existing guidance within our code, other than this sort of definition of a reception facility, and so that's, that's how we've just been using it um, and thinking about it throughout the permits we approve of special events.
Thank you, and just, well, since you, since you brought it up, I have a quick question. So the num- the, the number six annual multi-day events and six annual single-day events, is that just, that number six, is that just because it was proposed by the applicant? Or is it something that staff dictated and say you can't have more than this number of events?
Yeah, uh, the, the projects, uh, proposed by the applicant, so they proposed twelve. In general, almost everybody is asking for twelve, because it kind of matches what's permitted through the winery ordinance. We have rarely seen a project ask for more than twelve, you know, once a month. And again, because we do sequo, we did a pretty robust sequel review on this project. We're looking at traffic based on the proposed number of guests and trips, noise. Um, and so I think people know as soon as they start asking for more and more, there's more potential sequel impact.
Okay, so, so this project is specifically limited to twelve events?
Correct, yeah.
It, it, if it goes more than twelve, well, then we got a problem.
That'd be a violation, correct, yeah.
Mr. Riley?
Um, good questions, I have just a couple follow-up. Uh, uh, the, Mr. Seaweed, you just talked about, uh, there's no definition of special events in the ordinance, but the winery ordinance does define facility? Is that the?
There's a reception facility definition under temporary uses. Um, but the winery ordinance says, uh, you know, you can have a special event, but then there is no actual definition of special event in our, uh, in Chapter Thirty-Five, so we have to do a lot of. 35. So we have to do a lot of connecting the dots.
Right.
Over special events.
And reception facility also doesn't have a max occupancy or anything.
It doesn't look like it.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that, you know.
So these are self-imposed max occupancies in a project description, and that's what we did our SEQA analysis on.
Okay. All right, then, on, so on the conditions of approval, and I have a feeling, unfortunately, I have a feeling we might have to go in there and fess with them, but maybe not. On, on attachment B2 for the CUP conditions, at the bottom of that first page, you know, you, you have a sentence that says special events will include but are not limited to equestrian events, educational events, et cetera. But is that special events large and small? I mean, was the intent in the condition for the special event description to be large and small? Or any, is there any value in that? Or does it matter? Because we, now we've, now we're like sort of focusing on this larger events for equestrian events, et cetera, and then smaller for weddings, and I don't know if there's any cleanup needed.
We can defer that to the applicant, get some feedback from them. I know their intent is that the larger three-day events would be specifically equestrian in nature. So that could be clarified in the project description depending upon their feedback.
Okay. And I, and I really don't want to limit it. But I also, my next question, my understanding is that conditional use permits run with the land, not with the owner. So if at some point the NOVATs decided to sell the property to someone else who picks this up, they may have a different vision of what those events could be. So I think that the conditions do need to be pretty clear about that to protect, you know, the applicant as well as future operators, if that ever happens. I hope it doesn't. And then my last question has to do with the driveway analysis. I think it's a, it's Caltrans, right? So Caltrans talked about the need to widen the driveway presumably for horse trailers and the kind of uses that are proposed. But there was no letter from them? Did they just say, or was that just verbal? And you, and they said they want a 20, what is it, 27 foot wide driveway through? Is that what they asked for?
Yeah, Commissioner Bradley through the chair. We have email correspondence confirming that what they reviewed is acceptable. But yeah, that came from Caltrans, I believe. Yeah.
Okay. Because then our public works just says, here's the fee, that they don't look at, and there was nothing else site planning wise that transportation thought rose to any kind of condition need, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Okay.
All right, that's, that's it for my questions. Thank you.
I have, I have a quick question before I move on to some other commissioners, is that I noticed on page six that it, the sentence was water will be provided from a proposed well and domestic water system. I was a bit, I, I would just need some clarification in regards to the special events. Is it all dependent upon this proposed well being an actual well providing enough water? Or what, what effects are we looking at if there's not, if this proposed well doesn't come into existence?
Just a moment. Thank you.
On page six.
Commissioner Chair.
Yeah.
Page six of the staff report, I think.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Right here in the about the middle, right here. Let's see.
Commissioner Martinez, Chair Martinez, water will be provided from a proposed well and domestic water system. Is, is your question whether the domestic water system will provide the water for the special events? Because maybe we can ask the applicant what they, yeah.
It's actually a dual question because it's a proposed well means to me that there isn't a water well in existence that is going to be developed. Therefore, we have those permits that everybody has to apply for and so forth. And if it's, like any water well, it's not guaranteed. So.
Right.
So there's going to be an expectation of it's going to produce so many gallons. If that doesn't happen, what's the implication of it is what I'm looking at.
Okay.
And I'm thinking that the domestic water system probably already exists since we have buildings out there. And I imagine if that's the backup, that's what I'm looking for, some clarification.
Staff has some, yep.
Yeah, Chair Martinez, that proposed well, they've worked with EHS already, and I believe drill, drilling has started on that. It's already drilled. So they, they're ahead of the game on that, I would say, and it, it is confirmed. So they can clarify more on that if you'd like. Yeah.
Okay. But, but in regards to the implications, the proposed well doesn't produce the amount of water that's anticipated. Who dictates what the implication of that is? The staff? I mean, we or the applicant?
Well, we have initial review by EHS to confirm that it's likely to be adequate. They request certain reports to, to evaluate that before this comes to you. In this case, they also provided a condition letter. And, and when we analyze the adequacy of services, we're looking at that initial feedback from EHS. In this case, they did weigh in on the feasibility at that point, and they, they also have the condition letter stating what has to be done in order for them to sign off on the zoning clearance that allows these special events. And so if there were an issue with adequacy of, of the well, they would not be able to sign off, and the applicant would have to propose something alternative to continue or to proceed with the use.
Okay. Because I imagine for building permits, you're going to have to establish that you have a wa, a water system that is providing the adequate water for the size and, and use of that building. But you can still have outside events, which special events can be outside from my understanding. Okay. Commissioner Park?
Yes, I wanted to clear up a misimpression I think I left based on my questions and based on Commissioner Cooney's comments, which are well received, that we don't want to, you know, broaden the scope of a project and then loosen up or even ignore the environmental restrictions. And, you know, we will reserve, of course, under our procedures for deliberations, our discussion of what we want or don't want. And I suggested that's where we can talk about what's going to happen here. I can tell you that equestrian facilities on Ag One is not a very controversial subject in the third district. Special events on Ag One properties is an incredibly explosive controversial issue in the third district. So just reserve your thoughts about what the environmental impacts are until we have that discussion, if someone's suggesting. So I, I'm sorry for leaving that misimpression earlier.
No problem. Commissioner Reed?
I just had one last question, which was sparked by Commissioner Brightley's questions regarding Caltrans. It was one thing that became obvious to us when we were leaving the site. You know, often traffic on 246 can be challenging. It's often heavy. People on their highway often tend to be driving faster than they should with respect to people leaving the various equestrian events, perhaps with a horse trailer with living quarters or tack quarters and pulling, being pulled by a big F-350, F-450 duly, not a fast-moving vehicle. And looking at smaller events with the potential that some of the participants may be leaving with a level of compromise relative to their observational abilities and reaction time. Has any consideration been made in terms of traffic management and traffic safety relative to those people merging onto the highway? Perhaps a restriction to right turn only or some other mechanism to help reduce the likelihood of a, of traffic accident? People trying to turn onto 246, particularly those you may deciding to make a left turn?
Commissioner Reed through the chair. Like, so like we mentioned, Caltrans did review the project and the traffic study that was provided. They didn't comment on, you know, turns off Highway 246. Just a reminder that we do have a mitigation measure for traffic, parking and traffic control plan. So that is something that we would probably look for, just making sure that people getting on and off Highway 246 are, you know, safe and not blocking traffic.
I don't see any other questions by the commissioners, but Commissioner Park, I do agree with you in regards to events, special events being held on agricultural one or even agricultural two, I would say, even venture to say. But of those big weddings and stuff, it's become a boom in regards to agricultural one with these barns and good money and the amount that people are willing to pay for these. Just my social comment there. But anyways, what I would suggest before hearing from the applicant is that why don't we just take a 10-minute break really quick here, and then the applicant can come up and there's a lot of questions. And I imagine they have the time to kind of think over what the comments are and how they can address them. Thank you. So we'll come back at 10:35. Thank you. If I can have everybody's attention, we're, we're back in session. All right. So being back in session, do we need any announcement right now before the applicant takes, has opportunity to speak to the commission or no? The applicant, man? And, and when you're speaking, if you could state your name for the record?
Of course. Good morning, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners, and Happy Valentine's Day. I don't know if that's been said yet. My name is Brett Jones. I'm a land use consultant from the San Andres Valley. And I would like to introduce Lisa Novat, the property owner and equestrian extraordinaire, and Gordon Statler, architect, also equestrian. I am not an equestrian. I don't know that I have all of the questions. I know staff has looked at a couple of the items. And Mr. Chair, Commissioner Park, thank you for your comments. We are certainly open to some additional flexibility in terms of types of horses and the daily training. We love that flexibility. And on the events, it certainly was our intent that the larger 250, the six 250 events would be specifically for equestrian events. Those would not be the, the smaller six could be equestrian, but could include the weddings, parties. And it, and it really was patterned after the winery ordinance in terms of the numbers, the parking, those sorts of things. Just looking, trying to catch other questions that came up. I think we answered all the composting will remain and be done on site. And, oh, regarding the well, the well, the new well is completed as of two weeks ago. So now we will go through forward with the Environmental Health Department getting the water system approved as we go through all the other conditions of approval. Was a question, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Reed, regarding the commercial kitchen or the catering kitchen? It's my understanding, just from years of doing wineries, that it's actually one and the same, that the commercial kitchen is a requirement from the Health Department, and it's called a caterer's kitchen. The intention is that a caterer would come in and either warm or prep the food in that kitchen. I believe that was all the questions. But we are certainly here to answer any more. We appreciate your consideration of the project.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yeah. So on, on the kitchen, I, I was told in other parts of the county that if you have like a, a kitchen where food is all prepared off-site, and it's just come and plated and staged there, that's one kind of kitchen, not as serious as a preparation kitchen licensed by EHS with all the right kind of counterheids and refrigeration stuff. So I'm, I'm not sure what the distinction is, and I'm not sure if it's even in our code.
Chair, Chair Martinez, Commissioner Brightley, I, I might be able to shed a little bit of light on there, that there are distinctions in types of commercial kitchens for EHS. So Tina's going to pull up their, their condition letter to be sure. But regardless of what they ultimately need to do in the kitchen, we'll make sure that EHS evaluates it to the level that's necessary.
Okay. Then it's, it's, I don't mean to take so much. This is actually helping us get ready for the next item, too.
Sorry.
There are a lot of similarities.
Yeah, chairs, members of the commission. Tina's going to just read the condition from the EHS letter for clarity.
Okay. So, prior to issuance of building permits, the applicant shall consult with Environmental Health Services in regards to a food facility permit. And if a food facility permit is required, the applicant shall complete a application for plan review of a food facility to be reviewed and approved by EHS.
Okay. So you have flexibility. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the commissioners for the applicant? Seeing none? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips, do we have any public comment from anyone? I see nothing.
So we do have four speakers online. If you would like to speak on item number one, go ahead and raise your hand. Looks like we do have one speaker, Nancy Emerson.
Ms. Emerson? Can you hear me, Ms. Emerson? Little audio problem there? You, you want to come back to it? Well, I'm kind of, I'm, I'm kind of concerned, but there's nothing to go back, there's nothing to go to for right now. So I'll just say that anyone who speaks at a public speaking, you are limited to three minutes in, in regards to it, in all fairness. And we're just working on it right now.
Ms. Emerson, could you try again?
No. Oh, they're working on it. Okay. Well, I, I'm kind of in a quandary here because basically with the applicant speaking and, and commissioners asking their questions as to the applicant, I don't know if the commissioners at this time have any questions for staff. No.
All right. So I'm going to make a proposal for Ms. Emerson, if she's listening. And we can, we can go old school here. I can give you the phone number for the phone in here, and I can just put the mic up to the speaker. We've done that in the past. All right. So Ms. Emerson, the phone number here is 568-2092-568-2092.
David, can you hear me?
We can, I, I can hear you faintly right now.
Okay. I was just going to let you know that I could hear Nancy. I'm on the Zoom, and I could hear her speaking. So I'm not sure.
It's internal audio. But we have a phone ringing now, so let's see if it works.
I'm not getting all muted. Uh, go ahead. Okay. I just wanted to comment for we want on the lighting. And I looked at CVAR, and CVAR didn't have any comments on lighting. And I looked at the plan, and there was one light fixture. So my question has to do with the arena. The seven to four hours suggests that perhaps the arena is not going to be lighted. But if it is, I would suggest that there be a great deal of care in the placement of those lights, so they're well under the cover of the arena. And also comments that it's helpful to wildlife and probably horses, too, to have a Kelvin of 3,000 or less. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Oops. Oh, okay. Well, maybe the other question can be directed to the applicant, but there's no other public comments, correct?
No, no additional hands up for this item.
Okay. So let me ask the commissioners then. And we, we have the staff, we have the applicant, we have our public comments. Okay, so let me ask the commissioners then, and we have the staff, we have the applicant, we have our public comment. Have the commissioners have any questions of any of the two present? No? Okay, well, Commissioner Cooney?
I I think Ms. Emerson's question was appropriate. I'd like the answer about the arena lighting. I overlooked that in my preparation.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, the arena is proposed to be lit. We are very familiar with WeWatch and the Night Sky compliance, and we will. I don't believe it was discussed at our initial concept meeting at Cbar, but we will have at least two more follow-up meetings for preliminary and final. And that will definitely be a requirement to meet the Night Sky compliance requirements. And I'd be happy to reach out to Ms. Emerson, Mrs. Emerson as well, as I know her quite well, and she's generally at those meetings as well.
Reassuring. Thank you.
Thank you.
And what Commissioner Park has a question, it sounds like.
But just on on the lighting, I'd like to add that obviously Night Sky is light going up into the sky, and that can be from anywhere. But in terms of lighting here being noticed from the highway or anywhere else, the property has a distinctly lower level towards the south, and and the arena's on that lower level. So I think that's gonna hide a lot of the impact of any or direct impact of light to drivers and other people.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Park, that's an excellent point. Yes, we are in a lower bank, about fifteen to eighteen feet below the upper bank.
Well, Commissioner Cooney, you still have a question? Is your lights on?
No, that's sufficient. Thanks, Brett.
Thank you. So hearing all that and in considerations, I will be looking for commissioners' comments regards to the proposal of staff. Commissioner Park?
Okay, this is in in my district, so I'm pleased to go first. This project has been kind of under the radar with with members of the public. As you can see, we didn't get really any significant public comment. But it's one reason that might be is because we've been having so much discussion under the Ag Enterprise Ordinance and even even the Rec Master Plan about special uses and 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 things like weddings and other things on various parcels. And you know, we've paid a lot of attention to it on the larger Ag Two parcels and the AEO. We haven't touched it here because this is a smaller Ag One parcel. We're independent here in the Planning Commission. We don't, we're not supposed to just be taking orders from the supervisors as it appointed us. But we have to stay in communication with our district offices. And 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 one reason is a very practical one. I'll get calls from people, but the the district representatives, the staff people at District Three, and I'm sure at the other districts, will get more calls from public. They kind of know to call them there, and they'll call directly for the supervisor or for their staff. And so when I'm looking at something that I I think may be of some controversy, I I will check in with staff and or they'll they'll make sure I know about what comments they've heard. And and that's important for me to get that because they're they're sort of summarizing multiple comments from public people. And I can tell you that there's little adverse discussion to commercial equestrian facilities on Ag One properties. There's a belief that that on a lot of our, especially our twenty acre ones and above, there ought to be some boarding and and lessons allowed. When we switch to the topic of special events, weddings and other things, it's it's just an enormously controversial thing. And frankly, it's it's strongly disfavored in the District Three office. And it is something that I I think reflects what they hear from the public, even though we haven't heard from the public directly on on this one. I cannot make the findings and I cannot make and I cannot support the non-equestrian events here. I can support the equestrian facility. I'd actually like to see more flexibility allowed the applicant as I've made it clear on this. But with respect to another wedding site and so on and so forth and and other things, I I I'm not gonna support that. I I think Mr. Jones is 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 exactly right in referring to what's allowed in winery facilities and so forth. It's an inappropriate reference, but this isn't a winery facility. This is a an Ag One horse facility. I live on an Ag One property. I happen to have two three thousand square foot steel buildings. I don't have the acreage they have, but I have the same zoning, and I could make the same application for a conditional use permit specifically for equestrian facilities. And and I can tell you, if I did that and asked for the right to put on weddings and other non-equestrian events, you may never be able to find my body. I mean, it 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 just wouldn't happen. And so I I I think at this point in time that we should not approve this project if it includes those non-equestrian activities. If it doesn't, I would approve it. In fact, I'd kind of embellish it with some more things that I suggested. With this, we see both the uses and we also see the structures. One structure, the reception hall, four thousand feet plus, plus the porch of two thousand feet plus is, you know, I I can't climb inside their heads. I don't know if that's for the equestrian stuff or for the non-equestrian. It would probably be crucial for the non-equestrian, but I can see a real value in it for the equestrian events as well. And so if, you know, I wouldn't oppose the building of that structure. I'm not sure that the the applicant would want to build it if they didn't have the non-equestrian events, but that's that's kind of up to them. So summarize, I would approve the project if we delete the ability to have the so-called special use events. But I would allow that structure to be built. I hope that's clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Park. Commissioner Reed?
Yes, with respect to this application, I would say that since Commissioner Park is much, much more familiar with the feelings of other residents of the Third District, and it is in his district. I, like him, think this would be an excellent equestrian facility, and the plans here, I would completely approve for the equestrian events. I am not an equestrian person myself, although I have a good number of friends who are and who've actually attempted to get me involved with horses, which I avoided mainly because I'm afraid of them. But with respect to the equestrian part of it, I would support it as is. But I will also defer to Commissioner Park's opinions relative to the other events. So in conclusion, I would say my standing would be similar to his. I would readily approve it for the equestrian portion of the application, but would reserve approval for for the non-equestrian events. And I I I think that the reception center would be a great asset to the equestrian events in any case.
Fellow commissioners, Ms. Bradley?
I'm honestly so surprised and so appreciative that Commissioner Park has called it out that succinctly. I'm wondering if what they did is prohibited weddings, but they could have other events. What if they had a fundraiser for Hearts Therapeutic Riding Academy? And it was a benefit for another nonprofit, but they could actually get some sort of income stream? Because I believe, at least what I'm understanding through the other case on our agenda today, is that these large acreages, and it might not be the Novat facility because they're obviously philanthropic about this, but but for a lot of farms, they they need some other income streams. So I'm struggling with this, and we'll get more into it in Ag Enterprise. But if, is it just weddings? Or is it other things like farm-to-table dinners or other kinds of gatherings? Or is it the size that's of concern? Because when I look at the findings for the CUP, we have all of the development covered. There's no department that's telling us this won't be okay in terms of the development they want to put on the site. And the development they want to put on the site seems to be mostly for the equestrian function. But the conditions for operations for, you know, up to two hundred and fifty people or one hundred and fifty, there's no public comment, there's no one against it. It's it's below the grade, so I'm 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 really trying to probe more about which finding is the most problematic for you? Or is it just the term weddings?
Should I respond?
Yes, please.
It's finding two point one point five.
Okay.
Okay, that's the compatibility and harmony with the neighborhood. Okay, and that's that's specific finding that I I could not adopt. And it's crucial, of course, for every CUP. It's the center of a CUP, and that's why CUPs are different than LUPs and other permits. I'm kind of like you. I think there's a gradient between things that are clearly non-equestrian and things that are. If we had better definitions, either in the CUP or in the code of what a special event is, I'd feel more comfortable, okay? But right now, we don't have that. And it's, I I don't think it's my job or anybody's job to say, okay, we're gonna say weddings are okay, but bar mitzvahs or weddings are not good, but bar mitzvahs are okay, and this and that, you know, it's. You treat them all the same way. If it's if it's equestrian-related, a hearts thing, I suppose that'll be up to enforcement staff to see if there's a problem. And I I think there's some practical issues as well. I remember before I was on the Planning Commission, I represented Foley Wineries and somebody else on a mere tasting room on two forty-six. And we wound up having a condition from the county that basically implemented Caltrans requirements of a left turn lane at the cost of a million dollars for a facility where five or six people would go in in an afternoon and walk out after a little bit of wine. And it's it's kind of odd to me here. We have the busiest part of two forty-six between Bilton and Solvang. And we've all been to weddings, and by about ten or eleven o'clock, people filter out. It's kind of a stronger impact on the freeway potentially or the highway than a than a tasting room. Yet yet here, we don't have that that input from Caltrans, so we have to pay attention to that kind of thing. But like I said, I think it's a very big issue. Final point I make is you mentioned the Ag Enterprise Ordinance and so forth. The Ag Enterprise Ordinance is for Ag Two properties. This is Ag One. And Ag Two properties tend to be more remote. If we had a map of the San Diego Valley right now, you'd see along that quarter of two forty-six or various Ag One properties, and some are even larger than this. And the so-called triangle, that we call it, San Diego Valley of of Solvang up to Los Alejos out to the intersection of two forty-six and one fifty-four is but for one or two properties, all Ag One. So this more concentrated Ag One gets more sensitive to traffic concerns and things like that. And and there and there's also multiple parcels. I'm on a five acre Ag One. I could do the exact same thing as this one. You just have to look at, well, does it fit or not given the acreage? And that's why it's such an explosive topic.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Cooney?
Commissioner Bradley indicated she was a little surprised by the discussions of the Third District Supervisor, Planning Commissioner. There was also discussion of the supervisor for the Third District making a an effort to broaden equestrian facilities. So, you know, I looked at it from the standpoint that it would be a hot topic in the valley. And and then, of course, studied further and saw the amount of land that was involved was significant. But there is still a reason for staff to oversee twenty-four conditions to the property for mitigation of the environmental impacts. And that concerned me greatly. I didn't distinguish between the horse activities and the and the potential effects of the special events. But even without the special events, I would have a problem approving this project because I think what we're doing is we're passing responsibility to our enforcement staff to look at this project and its activities similar to the highway patrol, looking at trying to control speed. It's just virtually impossible, and it would impact life in the valley. And so I can't support it, especially in the light of the comments made by our fellow commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney, and I guess it's my turn. I'm really struggling because this is not the first time that I've I've had a project come before me, and I hear Commissioner Park. And that actually kind of caught me off guard because I'm thinking that if the if the surrounding community has an issue regarding these exact concerns, which we're now talking about, that I would have, we would have heard from them. And and that that's my struggle. Because it's it's there. It's something that's happening. I look at this map, and I know exactly where this place is, and I don't live in that community. But I can appreciate the fact that noise can be a huge, huge impact. And I've actually litigated on some issues in regards to where somebody decided to have an open barn and have their music from events coming out, and it goes to the midnight hour. It sounds like this is a closed-in building. It's gonna be entertainment within it. And I thought I could have sworn I saw something in here about the decibel levels of the noise level in regards to it. And like, and I thought it was like six fifty or something like that.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, okay. Six fifty may have been like a rock concert I went to in the past. But anyhow. But but I take to heart what Commissioner Park is saying and bringing into the issue and really torn on that and in regards to but I in regards to any event site, you're gonna have these concerns regarding people doing what we're not supposed to do, which is obviously drinking and driving. And you know, one of my also concerns in regards to this is that when you start using a Williams Act property for a different use than for Ag purposes, I've seen this in cases where people have used their property for solar. And the county has come back to me and said, well, you're no longer Williamson Act. I don't know. I didn't see that in here, but I don't think that's even within our purview of regards to what we're even supposed to be looking at. But just something came to mind. So I I'm still, I'm on the fence in regards to that, but I I really take to heart what Commissioner Park has brought to the hand. And nobody asked the applicant about that. And that was, that probably would have been a good time to ask the applicant about it, to address it while we're in the considerations here. And those are my comments. So with that, any other comments from Commissioner Bradley?
I'm still on. I didn't mean I didn't mean that. It's it sounds like this is not gonna have majority support if Commissioner Park moves in that direction. And I'm just wondering if, from an applicant's standpoint, you know, maybe they would be more interested in a continuance to rework the project description as opposed to put a nail in the coffin on this case. And I don't know if that's worth discussing or taking a break and figuring that out. Or or, you know, I I defer to Commissioner Park. I'm just saying there are good things about this case and the site. So I, you know, if I was representing an owner, I'd say, well, okay, thank you for the feedback. Let's continue it and let me redesign it or redo something. So I don't know if that's of any value.
But one comment before, and I'm going to pass it on to you, Commissioner Park, is that, you know, also what came to mind, and I forgot to mention it during my comments, is that the expense of going through and drilling a well, and now I imagine that expense and effort was done in anticipation of approval of something. And that's, that's heavy on my heart in regards to that expense, because there must be a business plan that's out there, which is saying, okay, we need to do these steps. And I don't know if that was just the choice of the applicant to proceed, or, and instead of, let's wait and see and make sure we have a definite concrete approval, then we're going to do it. So I guess that was the applicant's choice. But Commissioner Park?
I think that Commissioner Brightley aptly focused on potential continuance. And as a practical matter, there has to be one. You all know the answer, but I'll recite it for the, for the public. We have findings for approval as is. There is not support for that here at the commission. If, if, if all the commissioners or a majority wanted to just simply deny the project, we would have to continue it for the preparation of alternative findings. If there were commissioners such as me, and I think Commissioner Reed agrees with me, that would approve it in part and deny it in part, in essence, that would require alternative findings. We have to continue this. I think the only question is, what alternative findings do we want staff to prepare? And that would be either ones that are, you know, in part denial, in part approval, or complete denial. We can put pressure on the applicant to make a decision in what would appear like a split second to them, in which they prefer. I don't think that's very fair. And I'd like the applicant to be able to take some time to think about this, talk about it during the continuance period. So I, I want to make a motion to continue it. I think I need to hear more from other planning commissioners. Should it have directions to staff on what the alternative findings would be? And if there's a strong feeling that it should be approval in part, denial in part, and we ought to say that, give the applicants the opportunity to, to think about it. And, and the applicants might come back and say, you know what, if we can't have the whole project, we don't want it at all. And then that, in that sense, our effort spent by staff on preparing alternative findings would be a little bit of a waste. But that's just kind of the process.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, if I can interrupt. It might be advantageous for us to hear from the applicants, to get a read on where they're at. And that will determine the actions of the commission in regards to, if we do a continuance, if the applicants say we want action on our project as proposed, then the direction to staff could be come back with findings for denial, if that's where the commission is as a whole. If the applicants are willing to modify the project description today, then that, we wouldn't have to come back with findings for, you know, approval in part, denial in part, because it'll be a different project description. And it'd be a project description that the commission would consider, and the findings would support that findings for approval on a modified project description. So I think it'd be helpful to hear where the applicant is, and then that will help us guide the actions of the planning commission as far as what the commission would want to consider moving forward.
I'll listen to what commissioners have to say in regards to Mr. Wilson's suggestion. I would also say that to the applicant is, I mean, the applicant has a choice to make in regards to that, as to whether to voice out what their considerations are right here and now, rather than having the opportunity to work with staff, hearing what's coming out from the commission, and thinking it through. But, you know, that's, that's for the applicant to consider. Mr. Cooney?
I think you're right, Mr. Chair. But, you know, it's a big decision for the applicants. And I'd be surprised if they're in a position to say, you know, we'll change the project description in this way, we'll keep it the other way. That takes a lot of work. And conferring with Mr. Jones and others, I think it's, it's a tough thing to ask them to do more than say they, you know, they'd prefer a continuance. But for myself, I can't guarantee that I would support the project on this record with the impacts that have been described in the environmental review, unless some of those things are changed.
Okay, so I take it then we should, why don't we take a five-minute recess, then allow at least staff to talk to the applicant, and the applicant make us say, well, while we're doing exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Wilson. So, yeah, why don't you just take a five-minute break, and then allow the applicant to talk to staff, and then the applicant can at least give us an indication, and then we can make a decision from there. So let's take a break and be back in 11:20. Welcome back, everyone, to the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting. And I understand the applicant would like to at least address the commission in light of the comments being made.
We had some time to discuss amendments or modifications to the project description that we are willing to remove the non-equestrian events. So we would, we would like to modify the description to include the 12, again, 6 at 250, 6 at 150, for just purely equestrian events.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. So what I'll do is I'll look to the commissioners in regards to any other comments regarding that. In particular, I'll look to Commissioner Park. If he, even if you want, if you don't want to make comments, that's fine, too. But I don't know if you wanted to comment about what was just provided.
I think, my understanding of that, and I haven't thought a lot way through, but that basically tracks what I wanted to do. So I think we're good there. But I think to do this right, we still should have a continuance in alternative findings in order to do that. But
So, Mr. Chair?
Can you hear from the others?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think staff would have some direction on what those alternative findings would be. During the break, looking at the findings, findings would just, if we go along with this approach, we would just add equestrian, equestrian?
Equestrian.
Thank you. That didn't go over very well. Horse facilities to the findings. So it would just be tweaking the findings to clarify them. But we wouldn't need alternative findings because the findings would support the project with the revised project description as today.
So the revised document, really, the importance is the revised project description. Yeah. I would, I'd want to see that, think about it. So to me, it still feels comfortable to continue it, no matter how briefly, to have whatever necessary documentation is for us to see it. And because it is a revised project description, I think the public should have the right to think about that as well. So that's where I sit. I like, I like what the applicant's doing, but I think it should be continued so we can then pick it up and approve it if we may at the, at that next hearing.
Okay. And my understanding is I think staff is comfortable with, with working on this wording in today's proceedings. So would it work then that we just, in order to provide the time and opportunity to review it, as Commissioner Park has indicated, that if we, I might be using the wrong wording, but I'm going to use court wording, is put this at the end of today's calendar and come back to it, providing the opportunity to review the things, and then we take up the other issue that's on the agenda. In other words.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, sorry.
Really?
So Chair and Commissioners, looking at the time, it's 11:30-ish. So we could just stop right now and go to lunch and have staff, I think they've already been working on a revised project description, and they could come back after lunch. And if, if the commission and applicants need more time, we just continue it. I'm concerned about trailing it, because that would mean everybody's going to be staying here till after the Ag Enterprise Ordinance to come back to it. So I would say either we're going to continue it, or just come back after lunch and look at a revised project description, and see if that meets the commission's expectations. If not, just continue it.
Well, then let's just, let's just move with that. Let's just take our lunch break. But this is what I would be saying, and this, and this is my thought and process, is that the wording will come back, it'll be presented. And if the commissioners still feel, or any commissioner feels at that time that they still need more time, I would ask that staff also provide, or at least consider, if it is moved to another date, what would be the soonest date that would be possible to?
So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, there was some discussion during questions, not so much during deliberations, about modifying the project description or clarifying it as far as retired horses, training, things like that. So we want to make sure that's captured, as well as making sure that all the events as well are horse-related. The earliest we'd come back, I would say it'd be February 28th, would be the next hearing. We could come back with a revised project description if the commission is, wants further time after we come back from lunch break to review the project description. So we would need some direction before we could break on those clarifications that we talked about earlier. So I don't want to miss things that we've talked about in the project description.
Commissioner Park?
You know, it took me a fair amount of time to read through this project description, and I, and I noted some ambiguities, and I couldn't clarify them. I brought that up. If I'm asked to render a decision on it today, I want to take the same amount of time to read it carefully, and not with 17 people talking in my ear at the same time. So I appreciate it that you'll spend the work to do this. I can't tell you that I'm eager to spend two minutes looking at it on the screen and saying, yeah, good, yeah, not. But I appreciate the way that Chair Martinez put it, that we'll have it. We can make the decision at the time, should we continue it or not. I think we probably should, but, you know, let's, let's get what we can today. And it gives more, and it gives us something that people can comment on, whether it's the applicant, or public, or other commissioners.
In that light, what I would suggest then is, again, we'll move for, we'll break for lunch. I would like to have the language then in our hands, so that if it was moved to the 28th, if it's continued to the 28th, we'll make the decision then. But at least we know what language we have in hand to consider for the 28th, and have all concerns if it's continued to the 28th. I'm using it for example. Then there'll be no concerns regarding the public having the ability to review this new alternative project description. And it would be at issue, nothing new. Everybody has comments to hear from everybody before then. So, so Commissioners, are you fine with that? Commissioner Cooney?
I'd just say for myself, I'm not saying for the commission that there are potential issues that will need to be considered by the commission, and certainly by me. And despite staff's willingness to take time now to do it, I doubt very much if I'm going to be satisfied with a decision today just by changing the project description. We've got environmental issues. We have a distinct community that thinks that we're going to look at, look carefully at every development in the valley. And I don't want this to be an exception that, that appears to be rushed through. So I would urge that we give staff the time to do this correctly, get it back to us at the first available meeting, if that's the 28th. We have a blank day on the 13th, but I don't think we need all that time, 13th of March. I just think it makes more sense. We have a huge amount of work ahead of us in the Ag Enterprise Ordinance, and, and this would suffer in terms of our careful review.
Any other comments, Commissioner? Well, Mr. Wilson?
I may be retracting. I think I'm getting head nods and hand gestures, appropriate hand gestures, just to continue to the 28th. Hearing the commissions and where we're at, February 28th, staff is saying that they can come back with a revised project description. So if the commission just wants to make that decision now, we can just continue it, and then come back and start with Ag Enterprise Ordinance.
Commissioners, are you fine with that? Mr. Park?
That being to continue it to the 28th?
Yes.
Okay, I am, and I make that motion to continue it to the 28th.
I'll second.
Of February, was it?
February.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Okay, so then we'll continue to the 28th. But I would really encourage the applicant, or at least staff, I should say, that we have that language in hand as soon as possible so that it's available to anyone, including the public. Thank you. Let's break for lunch, then, and let's come back at 12:30? Does that work? Or should we, I mean, we're going to get in the Ag Ordinance. Okay, 12:45, 12:46. 12:45. All right, well, welcome back to the Santa Barbara County Planning Commission meeting. And we're going to be moving on to our last item on our agenda, which is the Agricultural Enterprise Ordinance amendments. And I don't think we have disclosed any ex parte communication at this time. Commissioner Pia Loos?
Do you want me to read it into the record?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. The following is a hearing on the request of the Planning and Development Department that the county planning commission consider the proposed agricultural enterprise ordinance project and recommend amendments to the county land use and development code and Article 2 coastal zoning ordinance.
Thank you. And staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we're here to present an update on the agricultural enterprise ordinance and where we are in the process right now. And let me make sure I'm getting this working correctly. But today, we're going to provide a brief summary of your last hearing on the project on January 10th. We're going to provide a final EIR overview as the final EIR was released for your commission and the public on February 6th. And then a summary of a meeting that we had with county sheriff personnel. And finally, then, the agricultural advisory committee's review and recommendations to the commission regarding the draft Ag Enterprise Ordinance. So I'm not sure, sorry, I'm just checking to see where we're at here. Apologies, we're on the wrong page, and I'm a... I don't know. So... Okay, apologies for those technical difficulties. So at your last hearing on January 10th, staff presented some initial recommendations that had been made by the agricultural advisory committee's subcommittee after they had met with staff three times. And at that time, they were, had only been able to get through a discussion of setbacks for campgrounds from adjacent agricultural commodities, as well as some proposals for some additional tiers for a smaller campground. And those were just some initial recommendations from their initial meetings. And the planning commission directed staff to continue to meet with the Ag Advisory Committee, or AAC, and continued your hearing until today. ag advisory committee or AAC and continued your hearing until today. In addition, the planning commission directed staff and the AAC to consider several questions, including how the setbacks or buffers would be measured, how camping campsites and campgrounds should be defined, and how to define or refer to semi-permanent accommodations. So those are some topics that were discussed by the AAC and we'll touch on those as we go through their recommendations. And now we're going to hand off the presentation to our consultant, WSP, who prepared the EIR and they'll be providing an overview of the final EIR.
Hi there. Thanks Julie. Can you hear me? Can you give me a little nod?
Yeah, but I think we're going to have to increase the volume of it.
Okay, I'll do my best to shout here.
That's better.
So hi, hi again, Chair Commissioners. My name is Nick Meisinger. I work with WSP and we were the environmental impact report preparers. We presented to your commission a while back in December, I believe, at the first planning commission hearing to kind of give us a summary of the comments that were received on the final EIR and some of the key impact analyses that were provided therein. So today I'd just like to provide a little overview of the contents of the final EIR at a pretty high level. First and foremost, the final EIR, it serves as the environmental document to support your recommendations to the board with respect to the proposed project or its alternatives. The final EIR, it provides the decision makers, agencies and interested members of the public with an opportunity to review the comments on the draft EIR, the county's responses to those comments and ultimately the revisions to the draft EIR, which were provided in strikeout and underline. If you could advance to the next slide, please. There are a couple new chapters presented in the final EIR. First is chapter eight, the mitigation, monitoring and reporting program. This mitigation, monitoring and reporting program referred to as the MMRP. It provides the full text of each mitigation measure provided in the final EIR. It also puts forward plan requirements and timing, including requirements and identification of the agency that oversees the implementation of the mitigation measure. And it also puts forward monitoring requirements for the entities responsible for verifying compliance with those mitigation measures. The next chapter that is new in the final EIR is the response to comments. So as we presented at the first planning commission hearing, we received a total of forty-nine public comments on the EIR. Three of those comments were from public agencies and then the other forty-six were from individuals and non-governmental organizations. And those included six oral testimonies that were received during the draft EIR public hearing. With respect to the revisions in the final EIR, again, these revisions were provided in strikeout and underline text so that they're readily visible in the final EIR. And those revisions were minor and administrative in nature. They directly addressed comments that were received on the draft EIR. Many were grammatical or typographical errors that were identified during the preparation of the final EIR. There were a couple consistency issues, again administrative in nature, how things were referred to across the document and across chap individual chapters within the documents, within the document. There were also a couple updates to the existing regulatory setting to ensure consistency across EIRs that are under preparation currently with the county. And then lastly, there was some information added to clarify impact analysis in certain cases. None of these revisions required the identification of new impacts or changes to the severity of impacts that were identified in the draft EIR. No new mitigation measures were required and no new feasible alternatives were identified. So therefore, for those reasons, recirculation of the draft EIR is not required in this case. With that, Julie, I will pass the microphone back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Continuing on with our presentation, we wanted to provide the commission with a summary of a meeting that staff had with several county sheriff personnel on January 29th. And this included meeting with undersheriff Craig Bonner and the law enforcement chief deputy and north and south county patrol commanders. The sheriff department raised with us similar concerns that your commission has heard before from county fire regarding the ability to adequately respond to emergencies to ag enterprise uses that would bring the public to rural and remote agricultural properties. And the uses of concern similarly were the camping or campground uses, special events and educational experiences. The sheriff staff also noted their concerns are in regards to ingress and egress, the ability to get to a location on in an emergency. The location and having some kind of map or ability to find the location if if there's an emergency on a very large property. And they're also concerned with the number of attendees, especially at events. The sheriff personnel suggested that a lower number of attendees, the better from their perspective for law enforcement. They also told staff that this is based on their observations of current activities and calls that they have responded to in the rural areas. And these observations that they shared with staff included a desire to see stronger enforcement to address complaints on properties before the situations become a law enforcement issue. They're some concern, they have some concern that their staffing letters levels are already limited to a certain extent in the rural areas. And so if, you know, not knowing how many landowners might take part take part in these new uses, they just have some concern if there would be significant growth in uses. They've also, they also commented that they have had some issues with Papa rodeo rodeos and concert events that are not permitted and that involve alcohol use, which is sometimes permitted by the state alcohol beverage control and sometimes not permitted. And they are also concerned with larger congregations of people even in a campground where the groups might be different people, but if you have a larger campground, more people congregated together, they're concerned again with law enforcement situations arising. They have also seen situations where landowners have allowed a lot of people to start camping on a property and the property turns into a permanent location for transients. So these are just some of the concerns that we raised with staff and so we're just passing those on to the commission. So next, we're going to go into, I think, the bulk of our, the rest of our presentation, which is to go over the review and recommendations that the agricultural advisory committee went through. So we just wanted to let you know that since December 13th, when the planning commission first asked staff and the ag advisory committee to meet, that staff has met with the committee for eight times with the subcommittee. The subcommittee developed recommended changes to the draft agricultural enterprise ordinance, project description and development standards. And they shared those recommendations to the full AAC last week at their regular meeting on February 8th. And the AAC moved unanimously to forward those recommendations to your planning commission. And so for the rest of the presentation, we're going to walk through some of those recommendations. We're not going to go into every detail. You have those before you. We attach them to the staff memo for this hearing. And if you have any questions, staff is here. We have the chair of the AAC, Paul Van Leer, who's here, who will also help us present their committee's recommendations. And with that, I'm going to see how I'm sorry, I'm having difficulties with the technology today, but I'll try to get things squared away here. So the first topic is setbacks from different agricultural commodities and I think I'm going to let let the chair describe those to you because he understands the purpose behind these setbacks.
Thank you, Ms. Harris, and thank you, Chair Martinez and Commissioners. My name is Paul Van Leer and as Ms. Harris stated, I'm the chair of the agricultural advisory committee. So first off, I want to thank you for allowing us to work with your staff and developing these setbacks and, you know, development standards on these activities. We understand the importance of these and we understand that these are very important to people like want to supplement their income, ranchers and farmers. That being said, as you can see on the table here, we do have some concerns as far as setbacks. The setbacks were discussed quite a bit and they've been adjusted through the full AAC and then other commodity groups. But this is what we feel comfortable with and the setbacks are twofold. They're actually for public safety and they're also to allow people that are growing these crops to adhere to their safety rules because the food safety rules are really enhanced, especially to row crops and then let lesser amount to orchards and vineyards and then grazing. So this is how, this is the reason why we came up with these numbers. So staff has developed some tables we can show, but so, you know, there has been some discussion about where's the setback located? The setback is located on the premise property proposing ag enterprise use. And the basic setback measure between the premise and boundary in ag enterprise use. Also, the setbacks are determined by the adjacent ag use and and Jason Ag use will be explained a little bit by these schematics that Julie can put up. Excuse me, Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Valier. That's fine. I'm just, I continue for some reason today. I'm just not I seem to be having, I continue to have difficulties today and I'm not sure why. This is the first schematic which the intent here is to clarify that we're showing an agricultural premises in yellow and it would be the property, the premises that would be proposing the agricultural enterprise use. And we just did this rough schematic, so to help illustrate that a premises is all of the lots that are under the same ownership and operation. So in this case, we've given this example of like five lots make up this one agricultural premises that wants to do the use. And in blue, we're showing adjacent ranches or farms. And so in general, the basic setback would be from the property boundary of the adjacent, so you'd be your ag premises in yellow, your adjacent agricultural property with a commodity on it in the other color. So
Yes, thank you, Ms. Harris. So we have like, you looked at the table, like depicts the different distances. And this example, the row crop, it would still need to be a thousand feet away because there's no intervening topography or any additional setback. And the second example, the orchard, vineyard grazing, we have stated at four hundred feet, so that that's would be the setback from the premise line. And this example, oh, that works. Okay, now we have it. Then we just go through that one. We'll do it again, I guess. In this example, the row crop is a thousand feet away. So the vent is a thousand feet away from the premise line because the row crop's right up against the boundary or the premise line. And then the lower one, the orchard, the vine and the grazing, it'd be five hundred feet away. These are sort of small scale events, not for camping and farm stay. And this is, this is a graph with there's was always been a discussion at the last hearing. You know, how do you combine these? Well, if the orchard, vineyard and grazing is the adjacent use, then the setback is four hundred feet. That's the current use of that property adjacent to the ag use. But if there's a row crop and additional five hundred feet away and then they would still have to be set back five hundred feet, so that would make up your thousand feet from the row crop.
And if I might add it, this is, this is just an example where your row crop is still generally pretty close to the property boundary. Here's the other, here's the other example, I think far, far away.
Right. Now your orchard, vineyard and grazing is like, it's joining use and they're only four hundred feet for a campground, camp stay and then five hundred feet for a vent. But you see the row crops well beyond the thousand feet, so it doesn't even come into, doesn't even apply. Now, this is something that still needs to be developed, but you know, intervening use, you know, there'd be some kind of a outcropping or creek with habitat with already had setbacks with, you know, like roadway, street, other constraints. So you, that would be, in this example, it's four hundred feet and then the use would have to put six hundred feet to gather your row crop distance of a thousand. But that would be intervening topography is another example. It's a possibility.
And again, this is still something that would be worked out, but the intent here is to develop some kind of criteria where if you've got land that has constraints that would not be able to be farmed with a row crop, where there would be some adjustments made, adjusting this one thousand foot setback downward. And and again, I think, I think the intent of the row crop setback and some of the various adjustments is what we heard from the committee and the chair can correct me if I'm wrong, but that the intent is to ensure that there's still some flexibility for the farmer who's growing row crops and who has arable land that they could move closer to the property line and not be negatively affected by the adjacent ag enterprise use where there's people on the site. And again, because they have, they have a lot of rules and regulations that they have to follow in in order to provide for food safety as well as to provide for safety to people on a property adjacent to the farm.
That's correct. So, so back to our recommendations, you see on the graph above you. So we feel it'd be safe for row crops to be a thousand feet across the board, all three of those proposed events or proposed activities, campgrounds, farm stays and small scale events. Orchards, a lesser concern, still have food safety issues, but a lesser concern. So four hundred, four hundred and then five hundred for small scale events. Vineyards the same. And then grazing, range land, the same as well.
Okay, so
And if you go back up, Julie, or it's Ms. Harris, we also recommend, the AC recommends the use of private agreements to kind of work these issues out between landowners to reset backs. I know staff does not recommend that, but they would sit it through standards, but we feel that that can be done neighbor to neighbor to reduce these setbacks and have an agreement between the two landowners.
At your last hearing, I believe we presented some proposals that the ag advisory committee began thinking about to allow some low-impact campgrounds that would be more attuned with the proposed SB 620. And these were presented, there was a version of this presented to the to the planning commission at your last hearing and then the the AAC discussed this further and refined this table with these proposals. So they were still looking at wanting to create zoning clearance levels of review for camp, for smaller campgrounds. And their first concept in the left column is a low-impact campground that And their first concept in the left column is a low-impact campground that tiers the side, the number of campsites up to nine sites, and this is in keeping with the proposed state law SB 620. And under this version, to keep it low-impact, there would be no new structures allowed and no semi-permanent accommodations, or in other words, no accommodations on the, in the campground that are provided by the landowner. So, this would be the kind of situation where it's only the, the camper visiting the campground brings their own tent, brings their own camper or RV and sets that up for their camping experience. And there's a footnote here, a couple of footnotes. One is that if that was, that camping was going to be located adjacent to row crops, they would like to see a land use permit instead of a zoning clearance so that they can better address the setback issues and concerns associated with bringing people close to an adjacent property that is, that is growing a food crop. And the second footnote, we have to go on to the next page, is the question about how to provide wastewater disposal because current, the current requirements in the county code is that, I think we've covered this before, you have to build an onsite wastewater treatment system, and that's a big investment for something that would be this very small use. And so, in this, in this concept, if your planning commission wanted to recommend this concept to the board, you'd also have to be asking the board to direct the Environmental Health Services to allow some kind of porta-potties to service those low-impact uses. The ag advisory committee also proposed a zoning clearance level for the lowest campgrounds. I think in the, in the proposed project that's been presented in the EIR and in your original staff report, the lowest tier of camping would allow 15 campsites in a campground on a property that's 100 acres or less in size. This is an opt, that would be with the land use permit, that's in the current proposal, and the ag advisory committee is proposing that this be allowed with a zoning clearance for these lower levels. And they'd like to, again, tier the number of sites based on the size of the premises. And in this, in this tier, new structures would be allowed as, under the current proposal with a land use permit. And if, and if the planning commission would like to have some of those semi-permanent accommodations, which is what we're calling them right now, for lack of a better term, but the landowner provided accommodations like an airstream or, or a yurt or a park, park trailers or park mods, those are all some of the different types of semi-permanent structures that are in the current proposal. They would like to see a limit that no more than 30% of the campsites be allowed to have those kind of landowner-provided accommodations. And then the rest of the proposal would be the same. There are only a couple of the development standards that I would like to point out. I think some of the most important ones that the AAC brought up was, they would like to see some kind of onsite supervision at campgrounds, and they would like to recommend that the stays of consecutive days, I think, be 14, up to 14 consecutive with up to 28 per year at the maximum. I think the current proposal in your ordinance is to allow up to 30 days of consecutive stay, and there's no other mention of, you know, of repeat visits. Composting was basically a 500-foot setback across the board from all of the agricultural commodities except for grazing. Is there anything else you would like to say about that?
Other than, you know, our biggest concern about, we added these setbacks for safety, like food safety reasons again, but we also would like to come up with some kind of standard for controlling the runoff with these larger operations. So, it's similar to like a waste management plan for, for a question or animal boarding facility. And as you see in the grazing, rangeland, there's, there's a variable scale depending on the size of the operation, so that, you know, because there's been some concerns of people like, you know, why can't we do this next to grazing? Well, you can, but it's going to be on a variable scales depending on the, the amount of composting operation, as well as, but there's a, some kind of a wastewater control system in place.
Okay, farm, farm stays, I'm just gonna be very brief here because I think at your last hearing, you actually did see recommendations that were almost identical to this from the ag advisory committee. I think the, the long and short of it is with this recommendation, the AAC is looking at allowing, or allowing a little bit more additional use under the zoning clearance option. And then I think the other main change is similar to campgrounds, they recommend a 14-day consecutive stay versus a 30-day consecutive stay. For small-scale events, they would recommend a minimum premises size to host a small-scale events, I think especially if those, those are going to be, if there's going to be an exempt level. And they're also suggesting expanding event hours to allow them to start at an earlier time that, for things like the non-motorized bike races, trail runs and equestering events. I think the current proposal has event times starting at 10 or 11, and they're wanting to allow an earlier start time. The AAC also would like to see staff develop some language to have prime soils be avoided if it's feasible to do so. And then we have the agricultural processing and product preparation uses. For a little bit of context, in the current land use and development code, there is a limit for the small-scale processing for olive oil processing and for small-scale processing in gaviota. And that limit is that in order to do the processing on your agricultural premises, you have, you have to grow at least 51% of the commodity on your property, and you can import no more than 49% of the commodity from off-site. In the current proposal that's in your original staff report, there is a proposal for an exemption that all product to be processed must come from onsite, and for the land, for the permit tiers, there's no limitation. The agricultural advisory committee would like to see no limits on where the products to be processed are grown, for, for whether it's exempt or permit level, they just want it to be flexible with respect to where those products come from. They can be from onsite, offsite, or any combination thereof. Their recommendation instead is to limit the source of the products to the tri-county area, the Santa Barbara, Ventura and San Luis Obispo counties. With respect to stacking of uses or multiple uses, this topic was primarily focused on whether to allow both campgrounds and farm stays on the same agricultural premises or not. There is a general support that, that both can be allowed with, that particularly if the properties are larger. And I don't know if you have any, any clarification on that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, we, we felt on a larger piece of property, 1,000 acres or greater, are yet to be determined. We felt that we could, we could have a campground and a farm stay, but are we related to the premise size? We feel that would be appropriate.
The next topic discussed was the incidental food service at winery tasting rooms. There is a lot of discussion on how to allow incidental food service at the tasting rooms, and the consensus is that it should be defined by the hours of operation of the tasting room, so don't allow food service outside the hours of operation of the tasting room. They are supportive of, you know, the typical wine and food pairings and not having food served separately from the wine tasting, and.
If I may, Ms. Harris, well then, we also are supportive of memorizing the food service allowance at the, at the winery tasting rooms, provided under the original COVID-19 emergency provisions. I mean, it's been working for four years, and it's fairly simple, so what we're stating there is that we just feel should make, make it simple, and it's been working. I don't think staff would support that, but that's the AAC recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Van Lier. And then finally, there was a lot of discussion about what does incidental mean, incidental to agriculture. Of course, for, for, for the ag zones, for the ag advisory committee, agriculture is the principal land use, and they would, they want to identify criteria to confirm that the agricultural land use would take precedence over the hospitality uses. A couple of criteria that they discussed is perhaps to follow the commercial agricultural requirements that are similar to the uniform rules, or that the agricultural commodity should be something that is typically found in the commercial agricultural wholesale markets. I keep forgetting we have one more page. Because this was a little bit complicated, we, we put it, we took the table that was part of Attachment A, and we created this new column in the middle to try to, to reflect what the ag advisory committee is suggesting. And in a nutshell, the ag advisory committee is suggesting an increase in the number of attendees that would be allowed at a small, under the small guided tour. So, instead of 50 attendees, they would allow up to 40. But in exchange, so as not to create some general overall impacts, they would reduce the frequency from 80 per year to 50 per year. And over at the other end, same thing, same increase, they are proposing a slight increase of two per year, but I think they're just trying to create some round numbers, and develop in-between a middle level that basically splits the difference between an exempt proposal on the left and on the right, a land use permit proposal. And that's.
And if I may, Ms. Harris, interject, the reason for changing that to 15 to 40 is we talked about something like an average class size, because a lot of these, you know, these guided tours would be a class, an actual classroom, and 15 would not be adequate, so that's why we went to up to 40.
Thank you. And I think with that, we'll continue on with the rest of our presentation, and then we'll be available for questions. Pardon? Okay. And so, one of, one of the key proposed development standards or revisions to the development standards the, the AAC would like to see would be to honor a request from the Santa Barbara Vintners and the wineries to, to make it clear that these new permit requirements for the educational experiences and opportunities not apply to the lands that have a winery on the premises, and allow the wineries to continue operating under their existing winery ordinance regulations with regards to the events that they host on their properties. So, they'd like to just continue working under their current, current rules and regulations and their current permit conditions.
And then there's one other item. We, we don't feel there should be a minimum premise size required. I know AIPAC recommends 40-acre minimum for ag reserve contract educational experience. We feel, we, we should be more permissive with that because there's, they're going to be guided and controlled. We're not too concerned with the educational experiences, so we feel there should be no minimum premise size for those.
And just to add to Chair Van Lier's comments, the AAC also kind of took, because of their guided tours and you're able to control these events and activities, they felt that they didn't have, that it wasn't as necessary to comply with the recommended setbacks from the ag commodities, like at the 1,000-foot. Those would only come into play if they were proposing an accessory structure to conduct some of these activities, but since most of these are going to be guided tours outside, they generally recommended a sort of a standard setback of 100 feet or so, not, they wouldn't have to comply with the larger setbacks.
Okay. With that, we're ready to turn it back to the Planning Commission. Coming full circle, we're back to a slide from our original, original hearing, and we're looking for the Planning Commission's recommendations, if there are any to further amend the proposed agricultural enterprise ordinance. You've got recommendations from the ag advisory committee to consider, as well as many public comments, but we're looking for recommendations on the appropriate permit tiers for each use, appropriate intensities of use at each permit tier, appropriate development standards to address the land use compatibility issues, and how to address the multiple agricultural enterprises on one premises. And to assist with that today, we also have included Attachment A, the summary project description from your first staff report, and that's the table I think everybody's most familiar with. We've added a column if we, you know, need, want to add any notes or direction from your planning commission to the columns or make any edits to basic project description details. We've also got available to pull up on screen if you'd like to look at it. Attachment C, which is the LUDC draft ordinance text, and Attachment D, the coastal zoning ordinance draft ordinance text. And both of these are again from your, the original staff report to your commission back in November. So, none of that has changed yet.
All right, so I take it this is the time for the Commissioners to inquire of staff? Mr. Park?
Do I, I want to ask a question about what I've just heard, and I, I went over that memo a number of times, and I made a promise to myself and to many staff people, I was not going to try to make sense of the use of the English language, that that was a little bit of a fruitless experience. But, and that's why I very much appreciate the schematics, and they are the AAC's opinion, and that's fine. But there are things that I didn't understand, and there's things that I don't agree with. But I, I don't want to go over all that right now. I do want to go over one issue that I, I just heard at the end of this, I guess I didn't understand, and I think it's pivotal, and it was, if you would go back, if you were able to go back, Ms. Harris, to the slide near the end about incidental uses. What's, what's an incidental? What's incidental to agriculture? I think it's maybe the second to the last one? No, it's a third to the last one? There you go. And I was listening to you present on that, and I thought, oh, what's the point of this? And, and I, I guess the point is this is sort of a threshold question, that, that some use that's to be allowed under the ag enterprise ordinance has to be incidental to agriculture, and that this is the test for it. Okay, that's at least what I heard you say. I don't know how you actually process something like that, administer it. Do we have a junior-level planner? Do we have a junior-level planner at each application saying, well, is this truly incidental to ag? And then we've got this idea that criteria may include that it's an agricultural commodity typically found in commercial agricultural wholesale markets. So I'm going to tell you what's disturbing to me about it, then I want to ask Mr. Van Leer, and perhaps staff, if that's what you really want. I drive around this state a whole lot, and one of the pitches I make about North County agriculture, particularly Santa Maria Valley and Long Poak, is we have the greatest diversity of crops of any county in, in the state. And you can argue that, but I'll argue it, no, we do. And it's, and it's kind of amazing. And each of those crops started with something that nobody believed in. Now, I don't know how many people were growing strawberries 25 years ago, but right now, according to the ag report, we have approximately 700,000 acres of ag. About 130,000 is in row crop, about 12,000-something is in strawberries. And strawberries is far and away the biggest crop we have. It approaches $1 billion on its own. It approaches half of the value of all of our agricultural crops, all on its own. And yet it was, it would not have qualified 25 years ago, or whatever the number was. And what we see scattered all throughout this county are people that are experimenting with coffee, with tea, with Juju bees, whatever those are. You get them in, in, in New Koyama. I've had them, but I still don't know what they are. And I think if we have something that says, to call it agriculture and allow these adjacent uses, we have to say it's in a commercially agricultural wholesale market? That's crazy. Mr. Van Leer, is that what you included, was to exclude all those innovative forms of agriculture we have all over this county, in San Luis Obispo County, and points northwest and south? Well, maybe not west, that's the ocean, but east?
Chair Park through the, excuse me, Commissioner Park through the chair. No, that's not, that's not our objective. We just discussed this, like, basically for 20 minutes. This is something we've always been concerned about. Our concern is, is an example, the outliers. What is it you're doing has to be agriculture, right? What is agriculture? What is, what is a productive agriculture? The example was brought up, one goat on a pasture, is that productive agriculture? And now you can be allowed to these other uses. I know that's an extreme example. So we were trying to come up with a standard, and what I, I actually brought up the standard for the, use the uniform rules as their standard. They have to have a standard for getting in the Williamson Act, and that, those standards are not, shall be agriculture commodity typically found in commercial agriculture wholesale markets. That's something that was discussed, but that's not necessarily what we're recommending. We just want to make sure that there's a test that can be done, so that it's, all these activities are going to be ancillary to the ag activities that's currently on the property. Because remember, these, these are ag zone properties, not commercially zoned properties. So we want to make sure that there's a test that people have to adhere to. I don't know what that would be, to be honest with you.
I'm afraid of the inquiry. My friend Andy Caldwell, people think, how can you be friends with me? We're so opposite in politics, but I guess we're both disruptive. I don't know. He quoted to me once, said, you know, people say that ranching cattle is a hobby. And he says, that's not true. It's really, it's an addiction. Okay? And you can take the biggest cattle ranches, and Mr. Cooney and I know the biggest one in this county, and, and say, do they make any money or not? You know? And, and maybe they don't. So is it productive agriculture? I mean, there's animals out there, but it's more of a, of a lifestyle and that kind of thing. But what the benefit it provides for the whole rest of the county is tremendous amounts of carbon sequestration, preserves a culture that's completely in the middle of what this county is, and it also preserves tremendous amount of open space, view space for the rest of us. So agriculture can be productive to the rest of the world, even if it's not making any money or otherwise meeting some, some tests. So I'm, I'm really concerned about this, and I don't like it.
If I may, Commissioner Park through the chair. We, we're not talking about monetarily, we're talking about production. So there's a difference. So we, you know, you, you don't have to necessarily make a living at this, or make a productive living. It's, it's a lifestyle, yes, but you have to show that, that's why I go back to the uniform rules. They have standards for you to apply to get a tax break. So that's kind of the way I feel we should be aiming towards this. And again, I don't have the answer to that question, but it's, it's not monetarily what we're talking about.
Well, I appreciate that. And I, then I will turn back to Cedwick Ranch, which is under a conservation easement owned by a public entity. And sometimes they have cattle out there, sometimes they don't. The cattle are usually out there just to keep the weeds down. Is it productive agriculture? I mean, it's an agricultural property. It's kept for agriculture. It has benefits as other agricultural properties. But we, we're on a slippery slope when we start to think, oh, what's productive? And then giving somebody the discretion to make that decision. But what I want to do today is, instead of spending hours and hours going over those recommendations like we did at the last hearing, Commissioner Reed and I are of a belief that it's getting pretty close to the time to make directions to staff on how to go forward. And we've had a lot of input from AAC, we've had a lot of input from public. I want to hear more. But I made a PowerPoint presentation on what we believe are the big-ticket issues that need to be dealt with. I don't want to have the tail wagging the dog. I don't want us to be counting how many hairs go on the tail of that dog and so forth, and is it two units, or three units, or four units? There's some big-ticket issues that have come up, not just at these hearings. I've been in this business of ag tourism workshops and analysis of this proposed ordinance for over five years now. I see them, and I, I want to go over on my PowerPoint. When can I do that, Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Can I do it now?
Yeah.
Well, okay. I had a couple of questions for staff. Can, can we do that?
You go first.
Part of it, because I don't want to interrupt.
Well, you should go first.
So somewhere in the ordinance, there's going to be definitions about the semi-permanent, like some of the things that you've talked about. Semi-permanent accommodation was, you said yurt, or, or, you know, RV or something like that. So that's going to be somewhere in the definition of this document, right?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Correct. Right now, we're using that term. That may not be the term, but I think the main point, whatever you put in that bucket, it's something that's, the owner is, is providing that accommodation. It's not something that the, the user is going to be bringing in for, like a tent camping or a trailer. So it, we're going to, we're going to have a definition, what it may be called, and what type of accommodation is, is what we're seeking from the commission, any, any direction.
Okay. Just, just clarification on that. And then...
And that is one of the points we directly addressed on my PowerPoint.
Yeah.
Very important point.
The other question was, did the ag advisory committee have any concern about the loss of, well, you know, maybe this is, maybe this is more deliberation, the loss of housing for employees when we're talking about the farm stay accommodations? That's actually more of a deliberation. Never mind that. Forget that. Clustered proximity to the existing principal dwelling and/or permanent winery structural development. What, what was the intent with this? This is under land use permanent and minor CP on page four of seven of the memo. Add similar language about this cluster proximity. What were you getting at there?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Farm stays. So the farm stay ordinance is modeled after the State Home Stay Act, and it generally sets up that the farm stay accommodation can be in the dwelling of the owner. You know, often that's, you know, kind of the purest version of a farm stay. We, in our draft ordinance, expanded that you could also have other accommodations in close proximity to the principal dwelling, whether it be cottages, parked trailer, or converting an existing structure for those accommodations. The, the conversation evolved on some of the winery premises, where they may not have a single-family dwelling, but there's a desire to have a farm stay. And how would, how could we align that with the, the farm stay? And so one of the concepts, one of the underlying principles from the California Home Stay Act is that, you know, it's either the owner or tenant, somebody has to be on the property, so they have to be living in a legal dwelling. So either if it's on a winery, they may have to have an ag employee, they may have a caretaker, they may have to get an ADU to have somebody permanent on there. But then the language that you were talking about was just to allow that, that farm stay could be accommodated in proximity to the already permitted winery development on the property.
Okay. But we're not talking about number of feet or within a certain radius, not yet, anyway? I mean, in terms of...
We haven't. I think, I think the concept of enclosed, in clustered proximity was trying to have those accommodations in close proximity to where you have the infrastructure to support it.
Okay. And last question was, and maybe this is Mr. Van Leer can explain this. The AAC supporting the memorializing of food service that was allowed during COVID-19. Can you help us understand what exactly that was? Was it off-site prep and package and delivery?
I don't know the exact standards, but the, the point of it was, it's simple and it worked for four years. And I think that's what we're getting at. You know, there was no issues regarding that. And therein, and I think that the supervisors actually extended that until there's the actual ordinance being developed. So our, our thought on that is just make it simple, don't make it complicated. And we touched on that a little bit in the memo.
Okay. And so maybe dueling opinions, and then planning and development said you were a little bit concerned about that because guidance is not clear, or how...
Commissioner Bradley through the chair. Really what was adopted as part of the COVID emergency was lifting of the prohibition of providing food service within wineries or tasting rooms. And that was really the extent of it, is that that prohibition on food service was lifted. There, there was no direction or guidance, or restriction, or regulation really beyond that. So it, it's really an absence of regulation, more than anything I would, is how I would characterize it. So while I understand it's been easy and to work with for the winery operations, we don't necessarily want to change that, but I think it warrants and requires a little further description as to what exactly is allowed. Really, it's, right now, all it says is that there is no prohibition on providing food service. So I think that's where staff is coming from.
Okay. I think that's my question.
Well, before Mr., Commissioner Park, I just need clarification in regards to that. What, what is the difference in opinions? Is it just that staff is saying, no, not just being limited to what was done during COVID, that the wineries can cook onsite? Or at least allow that ability, provided they get the necessary health permits and so forth?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioners, and we can certainly pull up the, the further description in the code, or the proposed regulations as to what's currently presented. But essentially, it would allow compliance with, environmental health has requirements for, for food service, and so they'd have to comply with any of those requirements. And it establishes tiers. So if all you're doing is prepackaged foods, sort of the low-hazard level of food prep, and it's basically packaged offsite and brought on, or provided by, like, a food truck or catering, that's, environmental health considers that sort of low level, then that would be done with, I believe, is it exempt? And if you wanted to provide more than that, by providing food preparation on the premises or as part of the winery, then if you're staying within the footprint of your existing operation, or existing tasting room, that's a zoning clearance. If you want to expand the footprint, or, you know, add a new structural development to expand the, the operation, then that would require permitting beyond the zoning clearance. There seems to be a misperception that we're, that the draft language would limit the ability to have a commercial kitchen, and it does not. It just establishes those permit tiers based on whether you're working within your existing footprint, or you're looking to expand your operation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. If I had it over to Commissioner Park. Can I read, Mr. Cooney? Nothing? Okay. Mr. Park.
There we go. Let's tee this up. Okay. This, nope. Go back. I'll tell you when to go forward. This is intended to be the basis of a motion to staff to revise ordinance pursuant to these instructions. So this is not just a discussion of ideas and concepts. This is actually an attempt to go forward, because I think we're about at that point in time. What you'll see is we're just addressing what we think are big issues that are out there, that need to be dealt with, and we need to make decisions on them. What you won't see is a lot of discussion of permit levels, because we think discussing the permit levels first is the tail wagging the dog. Okay? Better to decide what uses are allowed and at what levels, and then we can sort out, does it require an exemption, a zoning clearance, a, an LUP, or a CUP? I point out that the whole point of this ordinance is to prevent having to get CUPs for anything but the most enormous egregious projects. So that's not really a useful permit level to be discussing in this ordinance. And I don't think exemptions is, is either, because when you get to large-scale things, we want to know that they're happening. We want to have that data in the county. You know, how many farm stays do we have? How many incidental food services do we have? And we want to have at least some initial discussion by staff with the applicant of, are you going to follow our development standards? Do you know we have development standards for this, this, and that? So I think for most of the uses that are going to happen under the AEO, we're going to be choosing between a zoning clearance, okay, which gets you data and gets staff in contact with people at the very beginning of a project, or an LUP, which would, for me, only be advisable if we have strong feeling from the public that in order to ensure neighborhood compatibility, that people want the right to be able to appeal projects that they don't like, that somehow they think doesn't meet these standards, and appeal them to the Planning Commission. So it's going to be between those two classifications. So I'm not going to dwell at length on permit levels as we go through this. Let's go to the next slide. First thing is incidental food service at wineries. I agree with what I believe Mr. Van Leer's general philosophy on this is to keep it simple. And he didn't say it, but we all have heard it called the KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid, but whatever. And the definition of an incidental food service, let's keep it really simple. We don't need to get into a, a, a great debate on what's really a restaurant, what's incidental food service. We've had no one from the public come up and address that issue in three hearings now. I know that when we had, I believe it was the last hearing, or maybe it was the prior one, on extending the, the emergency ordinance under COVID to allow incidental food service, I asked staff, I think I asked Mr. Wilson, he probably doesn't remember, but I asked, have we ever had a complaint? Okay? From a hotel that our incidental food service at wineries was somehow interfering with them and their operations? The answer was no. Have we ever had a complaint from a competing restaurant anywhere about any incidental food service at wineries? And the answer was no. Have we ever had a complaint from any other winery operation about some winery operation having incidental food service? And the answer was no. I asked, have we ever had a complaint from any member of the public about incidental food service at wineries? And the answer was no. Probably asked two or three more questions, but the answer was always no. So for us to dwell on debating how we define incidental food service and keep it separate from restaurants is kind of a pointless and unnecessary task. Important things are it's located with a tasting room at a vineyard with tasting room hours. And I heard that from AAC, tasting room hours, and I think I've heard that from staff as well. And think about that, what it means. You know, you can drive to... You know, you can drive to LA and stop at 16 different Denny's, and they're open seven days a week, 24 hours a day. You're not going to see that up Fox and Canyon or somewhere else. They don't have the personnel to do it, they they don't have the customers to do it, and they're not going to do it. We don't want them to do it. It must be an active winery operation. I don't want a faux winery, okay, operating a restaurant. That's really not incidental to the winery operations. Does it have to be exactly where the winery, the wine is made? No, I don't think so because uh what we have is a a variety of ways of locating where where wine is made in this county right now. We have some vineyards where they ship it all to a central location and the wine is made there. We have some where the winery is on site. I don't think whether the wine is made right on site matters. I think it matters that it's in a place where wine grapes are grown and it's part of the wine industry, and that's where it ought to be. And if it's there, then it's then it's then it meets my active winery operation uh requirement. And absolutely, commercial kitchens are okay. I think uh Mr. Reed can comment on that, and and I think he's pointed out already that that's the safest way to provide food. So I think this is actually pretty simple, and we shouldn't beat it to death. Okay, let's let's move on. Farm stays. We have state law, and uh the state law, and I'm sure Mr. Lackey can can summarize it better than I can. And it's been around for a while, and it has to do with waiver of certain environmental health type requirements for food service at a farm stay. Isn't that basically what it is, Mr. Lackey?
Uh, Commissioner Park through the chair, correct.
Yeah.
It allows uh for them to provide food to the registered guests without meeting the more stricter environmental health requirements.
Right, and there's a sweet spot there of six, I believe. And that's been the 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 assumption we've been relying on as long as we've been talking about farm stays. I think the first farm stay uh workshops that were conducted, and they weren't conducted by staff, they were conducted by a consultant. I think that was in 2020, was that right, Ms. Harris, or was it 2021? I think it was 2020. Yeah, it was 2020.
Mr. Park, uh, through the chair, you're correct. I think it was just right when COVID was getting started.
Yeah, yeah, and so we've been talking about six units ever since. So I'm not interested in talking about four units or five units under certain circumstances. I want to talk to that six. Now, uh, I've met with representatives of the wine industry who tell me they believe that we're looking at just one subsection of a of a section of the of the state code and that it allows going up to 20 in some circumstances with slightly different requirements. And uh my response was, uh, over my dead body, are we going to see 20 farm stays? And uh I can kind of have the feel that you could go up to eight or something like that. And so that's a request, I understand, from the wine industry is to go up to eight. Um, I personally don't care if it's six or eight. I would want us to study that a little bit more. I'd like to hear from Mr. Lackey at the appropriate time of, okay, what's involved if it's eight instead of six? But let me go on here for now. And uh on what the building could be for a farm stay, that got a lot of discussion at those workshops in 2020 and a whole lot of discussion uh in 2021 when we saw the first draft of this ordinance as essentially the scope of work for the notice of preparation of the E I R. We had a bit of a uh a brouhaha at that time, and 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 I created it. And it was to conform that notice of preparations uh scope to uh what I believed had been discussed and requested at those workshops. And there was some back and forth, and uh Director Plowman came up and met with uh members of an ag committee I had formed in December, it was December 12, I think, I remember it, uh, of 2021. And um then she worked with long-range planning staff and came up with those tables that have been around for two years. Okay, and haven't changed since then. And uh that addressed buildings. Uh, a a major issue then was whether we would follow the Gaviota ordinance or not because that's how this started off. Let's 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 get some uh farm stays kind of like we have in the Gaviota ordinance. The problem with the Gaviota ordinance is no one ever pulled a permit to follow the ordinance and still hasn't in about, what, 10 or 12 years it's been around? So it's not working. Uh, and that limited uh farm stays to existing single-family buildings, existing single buildings. Uh, and what we came up with instead is you can include the conversion of existing buildings, which might include a barn or something else, obviously has to be brought up to code for a a residence. Uh, you could build new buildings, so you might build out six cabins, and you could include park modular trailers. We've been talking about park modular trailers in this county since 2018. You know why? Because in 2018, we considered the Ag Employ Dwelling Unit Ordinance. And uh it was pointed out aptly by staff that a lot of the existing ag dwellings were, you know, chicken coops and uh and campers that were sitting on the ground uh and and all sorts of junky things. And they proposed, let's go to stick-built, conventional construction or or um uh mobile homes on foundation. And Commissioner Frehney and I pointed out, well, you know what? Uh, park mod trailers would do a fine job and be better in a way because they don't require a concrete foundation on top of prime soil that then has to be removed if somebody wants to change their mind, and we ought to allow those. And 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 staff was unfamiliar with those at the time, said, well, what are those? Where are they? We don't like them because they can't be be uh inspected by the building inspector and permitted as a permanent residence. And we pointed out that the largest user of them in this county is Santa Barbara County itself because they're at Halama and they're at Kachuma and have been there for a long time. So parks uses them. And that these park mod trailers were developed, I think, originally as a response to Hurricane Katrina housing, FEMA housing. And they are inspected at the factory by the Housing of Urban Development Department for the federal government, and they're fully permissible. And since they're inspected uh at that factory, then essentially federal law preempts our 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 building code. And these are are permissible as per- as permanent structures. So we wanted to include park modular trailers with permanent hookups, that's what E H S wants. Those are farm stay units, and they should be included, okay? Um, this is very important to us. Now, as far as stacking, we believe you should have both farm stays and small campgrounds available. I've spent a lot of time talking to the hip camp people who are based in New York and who have uh uh facilities, they operate here, they're kind of like Airbnb. They'll, if if you're a rancher, you don't necessarily want to administer this little campground business, they'll they'll do it for you. And they tell me that throughout the country, kind of the most popular thing is that a a ranch will have one or two cabins, like a farm stay. It'll have some more elaborate units and yurts, and it'll have a place for tent camping. And and I think that if that's the tried and true way it's working throughout the country, it ought to be available here. So I think we should be able to stack farm stays in a small campground. We're not looking at so many farm stays that it makes a difference, and that they should be located remotely. Uh, our, uh, we have two big cattle operations in this county. The two biggest are uh the Siskiyou Ranch, in the Ranch of San Fernando Ray, they're both about 38,000 acres. Uh, there's some very logical places where they would put uh farm stays that would not be right next to their headquarters. At the Ranch of San Fernando Ray, it has a variety of houses. I don't know which house you would pick if you're going to put them next to a house. And the main house that the owners use about once in a blue moon uh is nowhere near the the headquarters, and and they would never want any farm stays near them. So we think they they uh we should be able to locate them uh remotely. Okay, let me move on.
Questions there.
Small campgrounds, the unit types, okay? Uh, we're getting to this issue of park modular trailers again. They're very controversial as campsites, and and it's been a problem, okay? The 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 infamous Buttonwood article that ignited so much concern in the San Onofre Valley, and it was concern that was expressed by people saying, this must be what the A E O means, and we don't support the A E O. We want you to vote it down. Uh, so that's, oh my goodness. And boy, talk about the tail wagging the dog. That's, I think, the one ag two parcel that's in the San Onofre Valley Triangle, okay? You know, formed by the intersection of 154, 246, and then Solvang, and then Los Olivos. And I think there's one ag two parcel, and that's it. So in a nutshell, we believe park modular trailers belong in the farm story category. They do not belong in the campsite category. They're permanent structures. They have permanent hookups, and they're they're too much. Uh, if I, you know, I don't have the staff for me to prepare visuals and fancy PowerPoint presentations. Uh, and I I was thinking of of taking a picture today, wasn't able to do it and get it in on time. And it's of the uh so-called apartments that are next to uh El Rancho Market. And if you go to El Rancho Market, you might remember there used to be a mobile home park right next to it. And a couple of years ago, the owner took that away, okay? Instead, they put in a row, or I call it an army, an army of park mod trailers. They're all painted the same color, they're rented out as apartments, and they they all look alike. It kind of reminds me of army barracks, you know? Uh, and they're, you know, for an owner, it's a clean and simple operation. You know, they they rent them out, they don't have to worry about rent control for mobile home parks and all those things. But that shows you the point that those are considered permanent structures. And it also shows you the point, when you're looking at that army of them, you don't want to see 30 of them on somebody's ranch or from the public road and somebody calling that a a a campsite. And I did get, when this first draft ordinance came out, um, a uh a a a ranch represented by the largest law firm in town. They took me out to it, and they were very excited, say, oh, my goodness, you're going to allow us to put 30 park mod trailers. Right here is where we're going to put them. I said, no, that might be what staff allowed, but that's not what we're going to allow ultimately. And 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 I'm certainly not going to vote for anything that allows a park mod trailer to be used as a campsite. And when I speak orally about these things, I often call it camp, uh, park mod trailers and their progeny. Because what's happened over the last few years, uh, as people are changing the sh- the footprint of those park modular trailers, they used to be limited to, I think it was 440 square feet, and they were typically eight feet by, was it 40 or 45? And now some are being produced that are 12 feet by 30 feet. You know, you're getting it more or less the same square footage, but a but a different footprint, kind of makes sense. And now we're seeing prefab ADUs, which are essentially two park mod tra- trailers brought in that um each is a half of the A D U. And they bring them to a site, they knit them together, and then they take the wheels off, uh, sink the uh the uh the trailer down to the ground, and they've got an A D U. And you wonder, well, how do they do that without pouring concrete? You need to go look at a park mod trailer, and you'd understand they have immense uh immensely strong steel trailer elements beneath them. They got a frame, it's like this much steel, it's a giant I-beam, and they got them on each side. And they actually put them in the ground, and that's your foundation. So that's kind of what's different about them. We're not going to allow them as campsites, and for those who would be listening today, they should feel very relieved because they don't have to worry about some hotel developer coming in and building A D two A D U-type units in multiple numbers and calling it a campsite. That's not what this is all about. This was all about taking ranches and folks that needed some supplemental income and allowing them to to build some campsites. Uh, I've talked to ranch owners, I've talked to one of the most prominent developers in Santa Barbara who's involved in a in a in a in a in a wine project. He says, I don't want those for a campground, I don't want to spend $250,000 building a campsite, one campsite. And I've heard it from ranchers as well, they don't have the capital to build those things as campsites. And they don't want to have that in the middle of their cattle operations or whatever their agriculture is, and they don't want to have to deal with it, so we don't need it. What can they include? Tents, yurts, travel trailers, and other R Vs. I'm told from folks that RV owners actually spend more money than anybody else that's involved in ag tourism. And they like to bring their RVs. I will tell you whether somebody pulls in an airstream pulled by their pickup or or they go and use one that's provided by one of these RV services that will bring one and deliver it for you to use for the weekend, or the farmer provides it, there's no difference in the world. So I'm not interested in in restricting what the farmer plants or doesn't plant. I want to keep some tents available for low-income folks like I was when I started camping. Uh, I think we need to provide that. Yurts, uh, I was going to bring in a picture of a yurt I took at a week ago at Lake Kachuma, where the county has a number of yurts around the promontory out there. They're they're fun, they're fun to stay at, they're cold, there's electricity and nothing else. It feels like camping and ought to be considered camping. I hate this so-called definition semi-permanent because it fuzzes everything up. It includes, on the one hand, park mod trailers that don't belong in campsites. On the other hand, it is included in some of the discussions we've had in the past, well, RVs and whatnot, which of course do belong in campsites. I don't want to hear it again. Um, we should make that distinction. As far as remote campgrounds, of course, we have to deal with E H S and their rules. And of course, to change some of that, we have to ask the Board of Supervisors to uh change additional ordinances. But I'm fully in support of remote campgrounds providing by pursuit of service by porta-potties. We 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 have events where there's large-scale use of porta-potties. It it works fine. Uh, in the picture I took of the yurts uh that I was not able to make a slide yet, um, right next to those yurts, this is the county's yurts at Lake Kachuma Park, uh, they're serviced by porta-potties, that's how they do it. And it and and it works, and it's safe. So that's unit types on small campgrounds. Biggest thing, I've gone over it 10 times already today, is park modular trailers are farm stays, that's okay. They are not campsites, and don't be threatened by them. And this solves a lot of concerns the public has. Let's go on. Small campgrounds, a number of sites. The tables have been out there for two years, and I believe they said, uh, I think it was 15 sites for 100 acres or less uh premises. That middle size, 100 to 320, I think it said 20, then it went up to 30 uh for 320, I think it did. Kind of going there, but making it more scalable. Uh, up to 100-acre premises, we'd allow 15. And I could be convinced to go down if if other commissioners think that's a good idea for for that size. 100 to 320, I want to make a little bit of difference there, so we've gone up to 25. And now the most interesting part is 320 or more. I don't see why the Chamberlain Ranch, which is 8,000 to 9,000 acres, or the Ranch of San Fernando Ray at 38,000 acres and some of these, have to be limited to the same number of campsites as a 320-acre parcel, okay? So what we've suggested is 30 campsites for 320 acres, and each 100 acres you go above that for the premises where now, you get five more campsites. Uh, if you do the math, oh, and we limit it to 100 campsites maximum for the premises. Why would I do that for such a giant ranch? Because I know these giant ranches don't want to operate 1,000 campsites and so forth. They they they'll want a limit of their own. And if you go to the Ranch of San Fernando Ray, there's only one road in. So this is something that the the sheriffs were talking about. You know, if you have a lot of people on a big ranch, just because it's a big ranch, you still maybe only have one entrance, and you still have safety issues and so forth. So uh, we've come up with 1,000 campsites maximum for any premises. But an example is the formula allows 100 units. is, the formula allows 100 units on 1,700 acres, because you figure 30 for 320. And then, to go up to 100 from 30 is 70 more, okay? And if that's five per 100 acres, that's going to be 1,400 more acres. You do the math, it's 1,720 acres. But beyond that, we still carry that 100 campsite limit. And we would split this into two campgrounds if the premises are under 320 acres. I'll give you an example of that. We toured the Sunstone Winery the other day, Mr. Reed and I did, and saw that they have an interest in putting a handful of yurts over on one piece of the property that is, oh, in between Rafujo Road and their, their winery operation. They would put a handful of RVs on a totally different part of the property that's opened up on the other side. And it, and it works very well when you see the site. So to force them to put everything together kind of screws that up. And I think this will work better even for the larger parcels like the, the Chamberlain Ranch. And I would allow those at four campgrounds. They might be four small campgrounds scattered about. So that's where we are in the number of sites. Let's go on. Events. This is actually the most controversial thing here. And it's kind of interesting to me is, we had very little discussion of it in the Ag Advisory Committee memo that we just got. We've had very little public comment on it. And, and I don't know why that is. I, I think it's because we just haven't gotten to it in the discussion yet. But we've got to get to it. I know that Supervisor Hartman is very wary of having any events. And, and I, I wanted to show her that they, they have a place and let her consider that. And there's probably other supervisors have those same issues. So we got to talk about it. Now, what, I started thinking about here was, how many parcels would have events? And if you look at a map of what I call the Greater San Luis Valley, okay, that's everything, all the tributaries, all that, you will find, if you, if you look at a map, it's got the parcel lines. And I was able to create that on, on Cal Topo. And I could bring it here sometime if I had some staff help and could make that. But what you'll find is, over on the left, on the west, is the Chamberlain Ranch, which is 8,000 or 9,000 acres. And right next to the, kind of the top part of that is the Spalding Ranch, which I think is around 5,000 acres or something. You've got the, the Cedric Ranch, which I think is about 6,000 to 7,000 acres. And then you get into Circle K in the Star Lane. There are more than like 3,500 acres or something like that. And then you get over eventually to the Ranch of San Fernando Ray, which is the outlier on the, on the east, and it's 38,000 acres. The number of really large parcels in this county for, for ranch operations is limited, okay? Actually, the fourth district has more of those large parcels that are in the 1,000 to 5,000 acre range than the third district has. What you see in the third district in this larger San Luis Valley is, you'll see Woodstock and, and the things like Woodstock, which are 20 acre parcels. You see a bunch of 50 acre and 100 acre parcels. And why does this relate to events? Two reasons. One, if you allow weddings at each of those parcels, you could conceivably have a, a weekend where there's 100 weddings going on, and bridal buses are going up and down, let's see, Figaro Mountain Road, Happy Canyon Road, and, and Fox and Canyon Road, and that's about it. And it would drive people crazy. It, it's also important to think about, what are we doing this Ag Enterprise ordinance for? Because I think that most people that own 50 and 100 acre parcels in the San Luis Valley aren't really doing much agriculture. That's, that's, you know, they might have a couple of pet longhorns, but I don't think they're really doing much agriculture. And this kind of goes back to what Mr. Van Leeu was saying, is, is it real productive agriculture? And so, to allow them to have weddings and whatnot, am I really helping somebody keep the land in agriculture? It's already, it's a home site for somebody who likes to have a couple of cows in the front yard. And it's not necessarily agriculture. I'm more interested in, in helping out those that are larger parcel sizes, and, and they wouldn't have those unless they were trying to do some agriculture. Some wouldn't have them. I'm also concerned about the, the, the worry that many of our constituents have, that there will be people that will want to buy agricultural parcels just to do some of these so-called supplemental or adjunct purposes instead of actually having agriculture. And, you know, if you can buy a 40 acre parcel and make it a wedding center, that might be attractive. You're not going to buy a 4,000 acre ranch to hold in weddings six times a year. So, that's why we are, we have a gradient here of how many units you can have, how many events you, or what events you can have that's based on acreage. And so for our largest tier of attendees, 200, we've gone up from the 150 that's stated in those tables, because I, I understand from talk, a lot of folks, there's a sweet spot kind of in between the 150 and the 200, that it, that it will require acreage of 1,000 or more for the premises for a commercial event. So, so allowing an event for your daughter, for her wedding, that's not a commercial event. Charging for it's a commercial event. So those sized commercial events, it takes 1,000 acres or more. Far fewer parcels are able to do that. For the smaller tier of attendees, we say 80, and that's in the tables, requires 320 acres or more. And the smallest tier of attendees, 40, which are kind of like cocktail parties, would require 40 acres or more. And we think this will assuage the concerns of most people that are worried about overuse of events. But it will still provide the ability to have events on, on the properties that need the help. One last thing, I forgot to make a slide on, and this goes to buffers. Talked to Mr. Reed about it quite a bit. We talked about it again at lunch. I absolutely support, in every sense, the concerns of the row crop people, that the Ag Advisory Committee has well expressed on protecting row crops. And so, we wouldn't change those proposed setbacks in any way, shape, or form. I am not hearing the same concern by the vineyard people. And I'm not hearing the same concern from orchard people. And so, I don't support that same system of buffers or, or length of buffers that I do for the row crop people. What do we support? The winery ordinance has a well-developed setback system where they're addressing concerns of homeowners nearby. And I think that's something we should look to as a model, okay? I would have a basic setback of just 100 feet. And I'm going to explain in a minute why I determined that. I'd have a basic setback of 100 feet, but it's modified, but what we need for the, for the row crop people. And it'd be modified by, in the same way that the winery ordinance does it, based on nearby homes, okay? If somebody has a home that's in an Ag2 area, and that home deserves protection that's different than just 100 feet from the property line. And in the, and I, I forget, Mr. Lackey, do you know, what, what is the distance in the winery ordinance between a, a winery activity in the nearby home? Is it 500 or 400 or 200 or 1,000? There's, there's something.
We can look that up.
Okay, but you know what I'm talking about. And that's, that's, that's the model I'd go there. So I think if we keep that simple with regard to boundaries, we protect the row crop people, which I want to do to every degree possible. But we also protect some of the landowners. I'm going to point, I'm going to pick on Vega Vineyard. I see Mr. Lozitas is in the, in the back there. Mr. Lozitas is one of about a dozen people that have been active in talking about ag tourism and the Ag Enterprise Ordinance in the last five years, for the whole period of time. And it has experimented with doing things and is, and is, and is making it work, okay? And so I don't want to have a bunch of arbitrary rules that shut down those people that have been trying so hard to make this thing go. And if you go with him to look at what is the most likely spot for a couple of farm stay units, probably park mod trailers, and a campground, you're, you're going to go to a place where he's got some olive trees, and it's kind of a crook in the road. It's 100 feet approximately, wouldn't you say, Mr. Reed, about 100 feet to the fence, the fence line? And, and, and that's not going to work under the proposed setbacks for grazing land. But let's look at what's on the other side of that fence line. There's a slope that I swear to God is, is more than 100%. I mean, that's more than a 45 degree angle. I, I don't know a sheep or a cow, and I keep sheep, that could stand on that, okay? And it's nothing but a bunch of weeds. There's an abandoned cannabis site at the very top of the ridge. And then, there's, there's just a hint of a trailer over there. So, yeah, it's grazing land. There's no rocky outcrop or creek or whatever. But it's not grazing land that anybody can use or ever would use. And, and it's just not going to matter. So to have an artificial setback there that would prohibit Vega from using the most logical site for its, its, its farm stay and campground makes no sense to me. Oh, also, I, I left out, in that same, same slope, there's a road that goes along the bottom and then makes a, a switchback and goes at an extremely steep angle up towards the top. I don't see how that road can continue to stay in existence with these rainstorms, but, but there you go. So I don't want to overthink these setbacks. Here, we've covered all the main issues. We can fill in as needed, but I'd like these to be the directions to staff. Go back, prepare an ordinance that incorporates this kind of thinking. Come back to us in a month or two or three, and we'll look at this all again. And our public can think about this stuff. You can comment on it right now. And we'll see if we've done a better job. Thank you.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes, yes. I've got a few things I'd like to, I'm not going to reread this whole thing. But I got a few points I think are quite important and bear additional emphasis. First, with, with respect to incidental food service at wineries, I think it's very important, the point that Commissioner Park made, and is actually reflective of a lot of the current operational conditions in the county, that those must be associated with the active winery operation. We've got one of our biggest winemakers in the county just announced, they're moving all their winemaking operations out of the county to Napa, yet they own several wine labels and have operations, tasting rooms, things like that going on in the county. So their ability to provide food service needs to be preserved. On the other hand, another reason to restrict them to only tasting rooms with active winery operations, if that is written out, basically, any lean to that offers wine for drinking becomes a winery. And I don't believe that's acceptable. Secondly, I really emphasize that I think it's very important stacked uses, like a combination of farm stays and camp, small campgrounds be combined. Also, would like to emphasize that I think the term semi-permanent deserves to die an early death, death, particularly with respect to park mods out in the outside world. If you talk to people who live in mobile homes and people who live in modular homes, they see quite the distinction. A park mod, when it's dropped off like a modular home, becomes permanent, whereas the mobile home is still on wheels. So I think park mods need to be regarded as permanent, thereby making them appropriate for farm stays, but not for campgrounds. The, the term semi-permanent takes a, a well-understood term, permanent, which most people understand to mean durable and long-lasting, and confuses it with the, the, the script or semi, be something akin to asking the physician about the condition of your loved one. He says, well, they're either semi-dead or semi-living. It's just about as useless a description. Okay, finally, to just kind of move on, the last point he made with respect to setbacks and, and buffer adjustments, all the setbacks we have, particularly, I'll refer to slide 19, showing the land that can't be farmed. We treat every parcel by using a satellite view, looking down from space, like you said, acreages for pieces of, of land that don't take into account slope. The piece he was talking about that we've visited a couple of times, it's impossible to get great enough distance from the fence line to leave any usable property. When you look at this intervening area, it is basically a cliff. And even though that area is less than 100 feet laterally, it's also at least 100 feet vertically, and more or less sheer cliff that I don't think even a goat could traverse. And I have a hard time believing any potential agricultural contaminant, like animal feces, et cetera, is going to be able to migrate up of that hill. So there needs to be some non, some simple or reasonable means of accommodation for, for such a situation. Two other things, I know, private agreements, I once thought that was a great idea, but on further reflection, could lead to complications. So I may go with staff on that recommendation. Private agreement between two landowners sounds great, but what happens at such time? One of the uses changes, or one of the properties changes hands? Kind of like an easement, what happens in that case? So I think that needs more examination. In terms of onsite supervision for campgrounds, I think that's in agreement with what the sheriff's department said. They need some sort of level of supervision to, to monitor activities before they grow to such a level that would require the appearance of law enforcement. And then finally, the ag processing, I know the, the committee seemed to invite the ability to bring materials from off-site, out of the county. I think that could be supported, but I'll put on my old plant pathologist hat. I think it needs to be well-vetted and make very certain that any materials, in this age of frequently emerging new pests, pathogens, and diseases, make sure any material brought in from outside of the county is fully compliant with any current ag quarantines. So, that's pretty much my comments at this point.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. And Mr. Breitler, you, you have some further comments?
Yeah. So, I'm observing everything that Commissioner Park went through on these slides, and I just had a couple of questions. On your first slide, the incidental food service at wineries, I think, when you talk about the winery operation, you're meaning that has a winery tasting permit already? They're already permitted to be a functioning winery with a tasting room? Is that what you're getting at? Winery operation that already has a permit?
Mostly, but I can conceive of a situation where somebody's starting up a new winery and, and, and has a simultaneous permit. I wouldn't rule that out.
Okay.
But, but basically, yes.
Okay.
And, and like I, we said, the, the winery itself doesn't have to be there, but it needs to be in a vineyard, okay, where they're producing some wine.
Yeah, because, because, I mean, I had comments from the public over the months that we've been talking about this, where people have said, hey, you know, the winery's already gone through this permitting burden to have an operating winery permit. So let's try to dovetail into that. And I think I heard staff say, try, but you can't change the winery ordinance, right? Wasn't that the explanation, why we couldn't just put some of these food service and event things through the winery ordinance? I, I might be getting off topic. I don't want to do that, but, anyway. Okay, so other questions on the Park and Reed outline here, you had a, a second bullet on your, or last bullet on the farm stays, and it says can be located remotely. Help me understand that.
I'm, I'm sorry.
The last bullet on your farm stays slide says can be located remotely. What, what does that mean?
Meaning that it doesn't have to be within X number of feet of an existing single-family residence, the principal residence on the property.
Okay.
And pointing out that several ranches have no residence on the property, let alone a principal residence, and there are some that have multiple residences, and you can't tell which is the principal residence, and you wouldn't necessarily want those farm stays near that infrastructure. It's appropriate in some cases, not in others. I don't see a reason for us to artificially limit this. I'm going to leave it up to the landowners. Obviously, that's subject to our uniform rules, and our uniform rules are subject to what the state allows, but our uniform rules can be changed, subject to what the state allows, by our board of supervisors. We had this same kind of chicken and egg thing on the cannabis ordinance, where we needed to change things under the uniform rules to allow what was done under the ordinance, and it was done. But it was all subject to, ultimately, what will the state allow.
Okay, well, maybe that explanation would cover your last bullet on the campground unit types. Remote campgrounds can provide sewage service by porta potties. That's the same idea, a remote campground being something that's not clustered near an existing development on a ranch or farm, right? Because that was staff's recommendation, was to get the farm stays close to where buildings already were located. Am I following this?
You are, and, let's see, how can I put this right? I'd invite you to go out to the Chamberlain Ranch, but really, it should be Mary Hayden inviting you to go out to Chamberlain Ranch. And Mary and her cousin Russ can show you some really logical campground locations. And they're very compelling in terms of reachable by dirt road or by their roads, the topography's right, it doesn't interfere with their cattle operation, you know, they really thought it out, okay? But they're not next to the main ranch house and those structures, not at all. And frankly, they'd be more enjoyable by the campsite visitors because of that. And, you know, most of the folks that are in agriculture that want to try this, they're going to kind of put their toes in the water. They don't have millions of dollars in capital to say, aha, I'm going to put up this. And so they want to start out small. And if you want to start out small and try, oh, let's put six campsites over here, but you got to put in bathrooms and showers and all this and that. And those are only going to be used part of the year, by the way, because nobody will be camping in the wet times and all this and that. That's a huge capital requirement that sort of pushes them out of that business, makes it not doable. And so if we can do something with porta potties, which is going to take a lot of work with the HS and regulations, we support that, that's kind of what it is.
Okay, I'm following all that. And what I'm trying to do is, you know, weave it between the recommendations that we have from staff, because I appreciate the recommendations quite deeply, because what they're doing is figuring out a way, you know, I love the beginning of, your introduction to this was, don't let the permitting way, you know, be the tail of the wag's duck. However, I appreciate that staff has given us the permitting that is going to be the way to move forward, because if there are applicants listening to us, they have to know, is this going to be exempt? Is it a zoning clearance? Is it a land use permit, or is it a major CUP? That will define whether someone wants to go for it, right? So I don't think it's a bad thing to have spent time looking at those permit levels. I understand, you know, maybe there's a way to simplify it now, and, you know, I probably support almost everything you're outlining here, but I can't give up the permit paths because that's how you do codes. And so I'm a little bit stuck between, you know, where you go with the big picture and your vision, and where I know staff has tried to outline this for us. So I'd, you know.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't want to imply that it's a worthless endeavor to talk about that, but I did not want to hide these big issues and make them overly complicated. So you'd miss the point of what the issue is by getting it all wrapped up, is this a zoning clearance, or is this an LUP? And I know it's not going to be CUPs, or we wouldn't be talking about this ordinance. When we had this discussion back in 2021, we reached a conclusion, and this was made by Lisa Plowman, that you know what? Let's let the decision makers openly decide, and of course, they decide everything, that's the board of supervisors, exactly which permit level it'll be. We know we're downshifting permit levels, and we're going to keep it as simple as possible, but let's focus on what are the types of uses and at what intensities? And then we can sort out, once we understand that, what the permit levels are, and that's what I'm heading for. I'm glad that staff did do that, but I don't think it's the most important thing to look at. I think the most important thing to look at is, is this use okay? And what defines it? And at what level? And then we'll figure out, is that a zoning clearance or an LUP and so forth? I'm personally still not decided in the sense, because I haven't heard enough from the WeWatches and so forth out there, how important it is for them in ensuring neighborhood compatibility to have an appeal and an LUP, even though I think most of us would rather not have all those hearings. So I get you.
Okay, so yeah, thank you for that clarification, because I probably misunderstood. Those were just my questions, those were just questions. Thank you.
Oh, if I just, I might make one comment in response to Commissioner Ridley's question about remote farm stays. Just an example, if you look at, a lot of the larger ranches may have absorbed existing dwellings in their expansion over the years. One case I keep thinking about, Rancho Sisquawk, I haven't talked to them about this, I don't know if they even have an inclination, but on the upper Sisquawk River, there's a structure called the Tunnel House, the Tunnel Cabin. It was actually built like in the 1910s by actually two of my great-great uncles, Henry and George Tunnel, and was used as kind of a getaway fishing, hunting cabin, those sorts of things. Well, it has long since been purchased, well, the land it was on was purchased by Rancho Sisquawk, and has been used as a lion cabin for cowboys for probably the last 80 or 90 years. But it would be such a perfect site for something like a farm stay if they were so inclined, and of course, it's far removed from the original, from their headquarters and things. But I believe there may be other opportunities throughout the county, and I would hate to eliminate that potential by limiting farm stays to just structures that are contiguous or immediately adjacent to the existing headquarters or home.
Yeah, okay, that helps.
Okay, Mr. Cooney, anything to add?
You know, we're further in the forest than I thought we were at the start, but my question, my overarching question is, how do we go from all these good ideas, alternative suggestions to the good ideas by commissioners who have a lot of experience themselves? How do we get from where we are to something that I, as a rancher or farm owner, would be able to actually implement? Because I leave these studies time after time, and I ask, where are we? Are we getting closer, or are we getting farther away from an end product?
In regards to what just happened here, Commissioner Park providing the document that's now on the screen, that was, my thought process was this, is that allow this suggestion of a suggested direction, which is exactly what Commissioner Park and Commissioner Reed were trying to do here, is to give some input in regards to directing staff, because staff needs that too. I mean, staff can't be told to go left, then right, then make a U-turn and come back and go back forward again. So that's why I asked that, it'd actually be put at the beginning before the public comment, so the public comment can even hear, which it has now heard, all the suggestions and the questions of the commissioners, and the public can have a full input as to what staff has put forth, as what now Commissioner Park and Commissioner Reed has been put forth, and to comment about those things. And I know that people are going to have to say those things, but, Commissioner Cooney, I think you are completely correct. I mean, we need to hone down in regards to where we can come with a finished product for this thing. It can't just continuously evolve into bigger and bigger, bigger things. So my suggestion is this, is that, I was going to suggest, we've been going for like two hours now, take like a five-minute break, have public comment, and address that very question. Commissioner Cooney, I mean, give the direction here, we've heard from staff, we've heard from commissioners, and then take it from there. So I will say that if we take a five-minute break, let's make it 10, 10-minute break, and then come on back, and we'll be back here at 2:55.
Chairman, please. So you want to have discussion by the commission about this direction, but what about public comment?
Public comment's going to be coming up right after we come back from the break. Yeah, so that's why I wanted Commissioner Park to give his representation as to this, so public comment can actually be about that too. Thank you. All right. Okay, welcome back to the planning commission. In recognition of what day it is, this would be our, should be our last stretch of the day for today. We'll see what happens, but. No more fun, right? Okay, I gotta stop drinking so much water. Okay, now what we're going to do is, we're going to go into public comment. I do have present for here, I believe I have one, two, three, four, five speaker slips, and we have those which are on, on, okay. So, well, let's do it this way, why don't I take the ones that are on here today? And I'll announce you, and for everybody, whether you're speaking here or online, the limit is three minutes, and we'll keep track of it and give you a notation, give you some kind of symbol that you're coming close. When speaking, first pronounce, provide us your name, and let's start with Sep Wolf. Coming up next would be Delara Macon. Delara. French twist to it.
You ready? Am I good?
Yes, please.
Thank you, members of the commission, appreciate your continued work, and, well, it's been an interesting day. I sat through the whole CUP hearing before me, and I think we're all here today to figure out a way to stay out of those type of situations. For sure, for me, as a property owner and a future applicant, potential applicant under the AEO, it's been our plan from day one to not have to go through the CUP process. I would hate to spend four years, hundreds of thousands of dollars on EIRs and wells and septic systems, only to come here and get turned away or extended. So on to the AEO conversation. We all know the saying necessity is the mother of invention, right? I like to say that necessity drives innovation and creation. So five years ago, there's a necessity in the county with agricultural owners, and that's why we're here today. So, again, a lot has been said, and we agree with some of it and not with others. The recent letter that WeWatch sent in for this hearing, we actually appreciate. It took a couple of inaccurate jabs at our group from Buttonwood, but we agree with the fact that we don't think that there should be low-quality tent developments on certain agricultural properties. We think that we should keep the standards high. We think that the proper development approval processes should be in place, and that we have the staff for doing that. Projects should be reviewed by Cbar, so that they are compatible with neighborhoods. We believe that the, there's a huge importance with rural scenery and character, hiding any of these developments from, you know, the visual impacts from neighbors. And we don't want there to be any negative effects on crops. So all of those things, we are 100% in agreement with WeWatch. We want to see more amenities for people traveling, that are already traveling to the valley, and higher quality offerings for them. At Buttonwood, we have wine tasting, we have a great membership, and we don't have anywhere for them to stay, to enjoy a farm stay, to enjoy the agritourism that we think is so needed in the valley. We also, I wanted to highlight another saying that comes to mind often in these types of processes, is paralysis by analysis. And if you guys have been working on this, commission and staff for years and years, sometimes there can be paralysis by too much analysis. So I appreciate the last hour of the commission trying to come up with something that we can push through, that can be put into effect, that gives property owners like me a path forward. And the continued rumor, and Mr. Park likes to bring up the 60-room hotel rumor out there, there's no plans for that, there's no playbook for that. We can't even run that course. So that was talked about two and three years ago, before our ownership ever came along. We would like to provide more agritourism at our property, farm stay elements at our property.
Mr., thank you, Mr. Wolf, we're a little past our time there.
Thank you.
Ms. Macon?
Hi, everyone, happy Valentine's Day. My name is Galerie Macon. I'm working with a handful of property owners, I would say mostly wineries, and I just wanted to have just some high-level comments on the process and what we've heard today. If you can bring up, Julie, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but if you could bring up that slide on the setbacks, I think it was like the first or second slide that showed where the premises line was and how things were measured. I think that is, it was different from what I thought we were in all of the setback conversations. Sure, that's fine. So it seems like if there is a premise, your neighbor that has row crops, you have to assume the property line as where you start measuring from, even though their row crops may not be on the property line. So it's like measuring from like potential ghost crops that may not ever be grown there? Is that, is that how I'm seeing it? Because that's where it's being measured from, is on the property line? Okay, well, I think that's problematic. And typically, what we've seen is you measure outward from where you're proposing, and then you make sure you have like your radius and that there's no crops, existing crops there, not that there could potentially in the future be crops, because that's like not fair, that you'd be subject to that. And then in terms of campgrounds, I like, I personally like the distinction of facilities that the public bring and facilities that the property owner provides as the two buckets. I would like more flexibility provided in the facilities that the property owner provides, and have Cbar or the design review board determine the compatibility and the aesthetics and the screening and APAC, and making sure you meet all of their requirements. That seems to, in terms of the applicants that I'm representing, would provide the most flexibility, and it would still have checks and balances in place. And I would like just clarification on where the winery ordinance starts and ends, and where the ag enterprise ordinance starts and ends. And there's, I'm a little confused as to, is there overlap, or are they? And there's, I'm a little confused as to is, is there overlap or are they two distinct, um, ordinances? So if you are a project under the winery ordinance, can you ignore that when you submit under a use under the ag enterprise ordinance? Thank you.
Um, next would be, I, I know, and I just can't read the writing and I apologize. I believe it's Jimmy Lo- Lokites from Vega Vineyard and Farm.
That's Jimmy Loyzidis and, uh, by far not the first person to butcher that name. Um, when, um, my name is, uh, I'm sorry. Thank you for having me today. My name is Jimmy Loyzidis. I'm the owner of Vega Vineyard and Farm. My wife and I are both the owners there. We're a family-owned vineyard now. I support, uh, everything that I've, I've heard here today and, um, I wanted to take a time to thank staff for their hard work and for, uh, John and Roy coming out and, and doing all these things and on their time and taking their time to see how this all affects us. You know, the, the, I think the ad ordinance has come around to help people like myself that are, you know, we're in a position now where, um, we, we, we can't make money in the winery business and, uh, you know, we, we stand a chance of losing our money if you don't find different ways to supplement that with all the things that have been proposed yet today. So I'm, I'm excited to have this. There's a couple of things I want to talk about was the setbacks, which they talked about at my property. Where, where I want to have it is the most perfect place to have it. But again, it doesn't, it, there has to be some kind of consideration for cliffs and, you know, mountains and things like that. I don't know how that's gonna be written. Good luck with that, you guys over here at the, um, at staff. And then the other thing is, you know, the commercial kitchens are important because I've been in, uh, doing this for a long, long time and food safety and how we handle food and dishes and things like that. Um, i- i- it should be the most important thing is how, how we are, we keep people safe. As a stance now with what we have with, with the COVID, um, ordinance is that you have to have a commercial kitchen, prepare your foods there, bring them over and then take your dirty dishes back and wash them. And too many things can go wrong when you have that many steps and there's a really good chance you can get people really, really sick. So these, these things are, uh, commercial kitchens are very important to, uh, food handling and food safety when we take this into consideration. Um, that's, everything I have. If there's any questions I'd like to answer, that'd be great.
Seeing that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next would be Ms. Allison Laslet and behind that would be Mary Hayden.
Hi, I'm Allison Laslet. I'm the CEO of the Santa Barbara Vineyards, which is the trade association for the wine industry. I was part of the AAC meetings and I met with them many times since our last meeting, developing the presentation that you saw from them. And we in the wine industry depart from some of their recommendations, which I've detailed out in a letter for you, but almost all of which I noticed were captured in the commissioner's presentation that we saw. I began that letter by referencing the permits that wineries and tasting rooms have to, have to get in order to operate. And this is relevant because one specific area of focus are the emergency COVID regulations that allowed wineries to serve food without seeking further permits. Our request for incidental food service is that if a winery wants to serve incidental food, that they comply with EHS, fire and building. What we are asking is that serving food that supports the marketing and sale of wine not require a winery to go through the permitting process all over again by having to amend their winery development plan or having to seek an LUP or CUP. We believe this can be done with a zoning clearance. We edited the language presented by the county and returned it in our letter. Also, as was mentioned, we have asked that we be exempt from the limitations imposed on small-scale events and educational tours as we are already governed by the winery ordinance for those activities to support our sales and marketing. I wanted to talk about setbacks for a question for a second because it came up. Setbacks that were recommended for vineyards. This is from vineyards for ag enterprise activities. The setback is based on the winery ordinance setback, which reads that you need a setback for a public activity of two hundred feet unless there is a private residence on the neighboring property and then you need a setback of four hundred feet. So that's how we came up with that. Campgrounds are public. Um, the, the additional consideration is that vineyards spray their pesticide or herbicide applications at night. So an activity that happens during the day is not typically problematic for a vineyard and your setback could be closer. But for something like a campground where you have people sleeping right next to agricultural land, you have to take into consideration contamination of a human being. So we aligned our setback with the winery ordinance and also in line with our agricultural practices. That's how we came up with that four hundred foot number. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think my time is almost up.
Thank you very much. I was out to any questions. And Ms. Hayden. Okay. So now, uh, that was the last speaker. Any other speakers here today?
We need to take action on this letter that was submitted. It's longer than a page.
Oh.
This item is a, um, a legislative item, so we don't have to.
Okay.
Okay, so you know, speakers here, let's move to the, those that are, be online.
All right. Uh, so if you're online and you'd like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand. I'll just start calling on people. Um, I believe, uh, you took your hand down, but, uh, you'd had it up the longest. Uh, Sierra Falso, did you still like to speak on this item?
Yes.
Go ahead when you're ready.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, my name is Sierra Falso. I am a landowner, um, in Santa Barbara County. Um, I was extremely discouraged the last hearing when I believe it was the staff was recommending two to four sites for under a hundred acres. I want to compliment and thank Commissioner Parks because your whole presentation brought joy to my heart and re-encouraged that if staff takes your direction, that I will be able to participate in the farm enterprise ordinance when and if it gets approved. So thank you very much, Commissioner Park. That was amazing. Very, very encouraged. Um, I think that's all I have to say for now.
Thank you very much. Next.
All right. Uh, so next we'll go to Anna Citron to be followed by Nancy Emerson.
Hello. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. Good afternoon, uh, Chair Martinez and, uh, Planning Commissioners, Anna Citron, Legal and Policy Director for the Gaviota Coast Conservancy. Um, thank you for, uh, for holding this hearing, for the very informative presentations. Um, we appreciate a lot of the recommendations of the Ag Advisory Committee, including, uh, their recommendations on the smaller scale campgrounds as including no new semi-permanent accommodations, um, and only what the camper visiting brings. And, uh, additionally, the avoidance of prime soils when feasible to do so generally. I would add, um, you know, I also, you know, we, we also really appreciate, um, Chair Park and Commissioner Reed's, thoughts on park mod trailers. Um, we absolutely agree. Those do not belong at campgrounds. Um, but I do feel that additional clarification is required. I like, um, what, uh, Commissioner Reed had to say about, um, you know, whether they're still on wheels. Um, because, you know, we, we do see, um, what are referred to as, you know, RV cabins at the El Cap Canyon Resort, for example. They call them RV cabins. Um, I believe they're similar to what you're referring to as a park mod trailer, but, um, there could be some confusion in terms of the definition. And, you know, further in terms of whether, you know, as long as it's still on wheels, it doesn't matter if the camper brings it or the landowner provides it. I would actually disagree with that. Um, there are, um, camper trailers, um, on the market that are forty-five feet long. Um, if those are left on the landscape all the time, which is what could happen if their landowner provided, um, that has much more significant visual impacts, um, than if they are brought by campers and they're, um, you know, on a sporadic basis. Um, so we would urge more refinement, um, around what type of vehicle, um, can, can be brought, what can be provided by the landowner and some limitations, you know, as AAC, uh, suggested for the zoning clearance category, but perhaps more broadly as we have proposed, uh, earlier, um, that there's be a subset of the total camp sites that is, that are eligible for landowner-provided accommodations. Um, I'm a little concerned that there hasn't been any discussion, um, at this hearing. I know it came up before about whether any of these private campgrounds are allowable by state law, the Special Occupancy Parks Act or the amendment thereof, SB six twenty. Um, when, uh, Chair Park discussed the, not Chair Park, I'm sorry, Commissioner Park, um, dis- discussed the, you know, retaining the number of campsites, um, originally proposed. Um, I had understood that the nine campsite alternative was proposed in order to fit within, um, the, the SB six twenty allotment. Um, and I, I would very much like additional clarity on how any of this could be accomplished, um, consistent with state law. Um, so those are some of the, the big issues that I think are still.
I'm gonna have to stop you right there. I'll let you go a little bit, uh, complete your thought there, but thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Nancy Emerson to be followed by Catherine Rohr, then, uh, finally Cat Lane. Oh, it looks, uh, it looks like maybe we have a couple of people after that. Ms. Emerson?
Yes. Chair Martinez and Commission Members Nancy Emerson, WeWatch Board Member. WeWatch is a nonprofit volunteer organization focused on land use and environmental issues in the Santinaz Valley. And we continue to support efforts to develop an agricultural enterprise ordinance workable for all stakeholders, including neighbors. Thank you for beginning to consider objective legally defensible definitions of the terms used to evaluate each, uh, application for whether or not agriculture is more important than AEO uses. Please look at the questions in our letter, which are drawn mostly from CUP required findings. They are key if neighbors, which include other agricultural sites, are to be protected. In the third or so CUP hearing this morning, uh, for example, um, I did not see any document that showed the location of neighbors' residences in relation to the reception hall and there was no discussion of how it would have impacted them. Yet our questions need to be answered at the front end of conceptual applications before potential users of this ordinance have locked into expensive plans. We are talking about early collaborative work of staff and applicants to better assure success for everyone. What WeWatch wants to see is an ordinance that is user-friendly, but that does not allow loopholes through which landowners who are not really agriculturalists can walk. Two comments about Commissioner Park and Reed's document. Uh, like the previous speaker, uh, I would like some more clarification about what size RVs you would allow and hope that the behemoths, which I think would have trouble on dirt roads, were allowed. Second, right now the ordinance allows eight campers per site. Using your campsite figures, fifteen would allow a hundred and twenty people, twenty-five, two hundred people, thirty, two hundred and forty people and one hundred, eight hundred people in the campsite. Our assessment is that Ag two, three, twenty sites can absorb more rural recreational uses and participants than Ag two, one hundred or Ag two, forty. Small is important on Ag two, forty and one hundred acres. For example, on Ag two, forty, we'd suggest two to six low-impact camping sites, sixty participants maximum for non-agriculture-sponsored educational activities or events. No amplified music or hunting.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Emerson. It, I let you go over the, the three-minute mark there, but.
And amend the ordinance up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Catherine Rohr to be followed by Cat Lane.
Thank you. Um, honorable commissioners and staff. I note that you already have in the record the January eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you state your, your name, your full name?
Catherine Rohr.
Oh, there you go.
Um, you already have in the record the letter submitted by a group of Santinaz Valley neighbors expressing their concern about the threatened effects of the AEO itself and the insufficiency of the EIR that purports to support its enactment. Um, at a macro level, I will note that one of your primary goals and one of our primary goals for the precious green space in Santa Barbara County is supposed to be to keep farmers farming ag land and to keep open space open in a way that will support and not undermine the local agricultural economy. So if the AEO applied only to parcels of, say, over three hundred and twenty acres, um, as Ms. Emerson noted, or even over a thousand acres, I think many of the concerns you're hearing from community members would, would fall away. But this drive to get the AEO through and the show of support by developers for the AEO really is and should be a cause for concern. From small farmer's standpoint, and I'm not talking about people farming on the scale or ranching on the scale of the Chamberlands, there really was not a need for this type of omnibus, cumbersome and ultimately unenforceable legislation. It's worth noting that here in the Santinaz Valley, we are very much aware that Realtors are already showing Ag two parcels, Ag two, forty, Ag two, one hundred parcels, not all of which are remote and some of which are surrounded by smaller residential parcels to potential buyers. That's to developers and hospitality industry enterprises in express anticipation of enactment of the AEO. Concerns that the AEO does not go far enough or make it easy enough to maximize hospitality uses of Ag two land are already turning this entire undertaking on its head. I think it's what we called foreshadowing in our high school literature classes. As has been previously noted, the EIR doesn't properly analyze the AEO's reasonably expected substantial effects on the environment in a number of areas. For example, there are no restrictions on facilities being located or events being held within vistas or view sheds or in which sound amplified or otherwise may readily and easily travel. Moreover, the proposed alternatives don't provide the decision-makers with a workable list of project alternatives. Unfortunately, nothing in the staff memo before the commission today resolves those concerns. Beyond that, as the commission's discussion of the last matter on your calendar today, the equestrian facility highlighted, the environmental effects are unknown and unstudied at the project level. This programmatic EIR cannot account for the unknown project effects and is therefore necessarily inadequate for project-level purposes. If enacted, the AEO will facilitate the rapid conversion of ag land to developed hospitality operations. And if that is not your goal, I respectfully request that you stop the AEO in its tracks. Thank you.
Our next speaker, pardon me, too close. Um, our next speaker will be Cat Lane.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners and Chair Martinez. My name is Cat Lane and I wanted to speak today to voice my support for the current language surrounding composting in the agricultural enterprise ordinance. The permitting changes strike a balance between environmental protection and making composting more accessible, which will no doubt have beneficial impacts on Santa Barbara County residents. Accessible composting will allow for high-quality compost to be used locally, which will regenerate soils. It will take some organics out of the waste stream of the already overburdened, tawagous landfill and will work to reduce our climate impact via carbon sequestration. As a former compost collector with the Ilo Vista Compost Collective, though I will note I am not speaking on their behalf today. though I will note I am not speaking on their behalf today, I have seen firsthand how regenerative compost can be from the soil to the community. Please keep the ordinance language as is and commit to making composting more accessible. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
We did have one additional speaker. Looks like they've left the meeting. So unless they return, Ms. Lane was our last speaker.
All right. So now that we've heard from the public and we have the suggestions of both public and staff, I don't know if staff wanted to add anything at this moment.
Not at this moment, sure.
Well, I have a suggestion in regards to something. There's been a suggestion in regards to a direction of this matter. And the way I'm looking at it right now is is that we have the AAR participation with staff, we have staff itself, we have Commissioner Park and Commissioner Reed with their suggestions in regards to it. The EIR obviously is one of the directives that we have in regards to it. So we're kind of in that box right there of what to do with all those with all those three elements. And I'm looking for suggestions from the commission as to what their ideas of going forward. And maybe my suggestion, I'm just gonna take the lead on this one in regards to it. If we could just, my suggestion is is to go back to staff who has heard of all those elements and and combine them with it. I know Commissioner Park's looking for a motion, but my thought process is, do we really need a motion if we have the EIR? We have the AAR already talking to staff. And now we have the Commissioner Park, Commissioner Reed's to staff. So that's kind of all in one basket, you know, going to staff. That's just my my thoughts. Mr. Park?
Yeah, I I my thinking is pretty similar to yours. I I think the first question we have to address is, are we ready now for directions to staff? And then to take a a a period of of what's realistically probably what, two and a half months? Because staff has to be working on the housing element, which is gonna take a lot of time and blood from them, and to ask them to come back in six weeks with the revised ordinance is tough for them. So we could say, here's directions to staff. I'll make that motion. Mr. Reed will second it. We'll vote it up, up or down, and give directions to staff to come back with an ordinance. Or the other alternative is to have another conceptual meeting. And maybe it is, just like you said, Chair Martinez, put together some of these things that we've we've just heard. And and that's important. I I think that because of the 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 importance that the AAC has in the county's structure for doing these things and the and the specific requests from at least two supervisors, Supervisor Hart and Supervisor Nelson, that we include AAC, we needed to do that. But we've also, you know, we we haven't been able to focus very much on Vintners, WeWatch, et cetera. We give them three minutes a shot and get a letter here and there. And so what we have is a collection of letters from four different hearings and a collection of three-minute conversations. It's better organized for AAC, and it should be that way because it's who they are. But it's kind of a lot to process for everybody. So I'm glad to make a motion and tell staff what to do, come back. But I'm also equally glad to continue it to a shorter period of time, not not three months, so we can have a further conceptual hearing and and where we tighten it down in all respects and where staff makes an effort to put things together from what it's heard from folks. And I think that's what you were suggesting, Commissioner Martinez, so.
And and you are correct, Commissioner Park. That's what I'm suggesting.
Anyway, I I can I can see some value in that. Because you know what? If we don't do that and we get a draft ordinance, we'll still have folks coming in and saying, well, I really don't like that idea. And we haven't done it, and we wouldn't have done the conceptual consensus that we hope to have. And we wind up taking just as long. And we wind up doing a lot of wordsmithing from the dais here, which we have enough lawyers to give that a shot, but we're we're all old enough. We don't want to do it anymore.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Reed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would concur with what you Chair Martinez and Commissioner Park are suggesting. Leave instructions to staff, then come back and address it.
Okay. Bridley?
Yeah, Commissioner. I I agree with Commissioner Park's suggestion. I think it might help staff if 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 we weighed in on a couple of things that were in the memo and that we also, you know, further fleshed out. One was the stacking, like one campground, one farm state per premise. Premise, and I would go with whatever Commissioner Park recommended. And also the setback issue, well, I I guess I would basically go with whatever Commissioner Park had in his outline. Trying to think that there were a couple of other kind of major things that were unclear and disagreed upon between the Ag Advisory Committee and the staff. Like third-party agreements, after hearing what Commissioner Reed said, I would probably say not rely on third-party agreements and go with guidance. Maybe those are the only things that were left in the memo that might help staff do the next chapter.
Well, with that consensus, I the Commissioner, I think you have a great idea in regards to let's just hear from the Commissioners down the line, see if they have any direction in regards to giving to staff, and then we could just continue to a date. Commissioner, Mr. Cooney, would you like to add to that?
I'll add one thing. First of all, I think there's there is substantial merit in all of the different presentations we heard today. And I do feel we're we're narrowing the issues that that would stand in the way of of a cohesive ordinance that will have a life beyond us. There was one comment by Anna Citron with regard to SB six twenty limiting campground use. I could do that research, but I think it would be helpful if staff did and see if we have any conflict there or whether there's something we can easily do to eliminate the conflict. But I, you know, as lava moves down a mountain, I think we're gonna get to the bottom pretty soon.
Park? Commissioner Park?
That's kind of a cool but scary metaphor. I'm gonna figure that one out. But I I I think our Commissioners are pretty much in agreement where we are right now. The one point I I just want to touch on, because I I want to be as inclusive as possible. AAC has thought this over a lot and likes the idea of the third-party agreements. When I look at it from my lawyer point of view, I think, okay, that that could be interesting to draft, but it but it could be done. And I think it'd be done in a form-like manner, so we'd have a template that people could use. And and AAC is is not made up of planners and professionals in this field and all that. It's made from people that do agriculture. And and they kind of know that farmers and ranchers spend a lot of time working over their disputes and resolving them. And so I don't want to abandon that idea. I'd like to see it still get worked on. You know, I I I would. And I had something else to say, but I've forgotten. It's too late. I'm sorry. And you're not.
So Chair and Commissioners, I I think we're getting to resolution, and I might burst a bubble on that third-party agreement. We can flush it out a little bit more, but we're not gonna support that because there's some legal consequences for implementing it. That it's not gonna, I would rather direct staff to do something that we can support. Third-party agreements is a good concept to think of in theory, but implementing the code, it's just it's not gonna work as far as how it ultimately plays out. Just for the Commissioners, you're thinking about our next steps is direction to staff right now. I think Commissioner Park outlined it perfectly as far as what we want to do. This is like, I think it's slower than lava moving down a hill. But what staff's looking for is direction. So you, an option could be you could provide direction today and say the starting point would be the presentation by Commissioner Park. And where there's a difference with the AAC, staff can draft the ordinance based on the direction from that presentation and start moving to a ordinance. And then the direction to staff would be those issues that are highlighted by that presentation by Commissioner Park and Reed, that's the starting point as far as the direction from the commission. That's where the commission's leaning. Any differences, discrepancies, we'll go with that. And then give some more pointing direction. If you want more information on that, the park, you know, state laws regarding park regulations, you can come back with that information to firm it up. But with that direction, it'll take a little bit longer today to do that, I think. I think the commission's getting close to giving direction. But that would be a longer return period for staff to start drafting that ordinance and putting it together. Otherwise, as Commissioner Park talked about, is the burden back on the commission to think and marinate on what everything you've heard today and all those different things and then come back and provide clear direction to staff with consensus from the planning commission on what they want the ordinance to do. So those are the two different tracks we could take, a shorter break, come back, and then the burdens on the commission to provide direction to staff when we come back or take some time today and say, okay, specifically, this is where we want you to work. And then they give staff the time to prepare an ordinance that reflects that direction. Well, I I I like what you're saying, Mr. Wilson. And but I would just add that some of the suggestions that were made, and this is my concern, is that it may change the project description of the EIR of which it was performed on. Because, and that's what I want staff to make sure that they're addressing from what Commissioner Park and Commissioner Reed are saying, and that it fits within that project. And if it doesn't fit within it, it'd be brought to our attention and say, well, that this is the implication if we go down that direction. And so that's me speaking on how to turn, but I'm just looking for Commissioners because that's what I'm really pushing for is is just push it down, but give it to staff with with all that's been said here and come back to us with exactly what we were talking about. The EIR, the project of which the the project description for which the EIR was based upon and the suggestions and direction that was suggested, I was what I'm trying to call it, by Commissioner Park, Commissioner Reed, and the AAC recommendations to it. And I'm wondering if staff can work with that and come back to us and if they have any thoughts of of that direction.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I I would say right now, so as has been mentioned, we kind of have three three buckets. We have the product description that staff started with and what's on the screen in front of you right now of the use tables and the different tiers with the intensities of use. We have the recommendations that came out of the AAC. And then we have what we heard today as far as recommendations or thinking of where a couple of the Commissioners are. I I would say honestly, right now, if you were to ask staff to kind of package it all together, we'd struggle to try to marry those three things in a cohesive way that we think is gonna hit the mark without further direction or guidance on on some particular issues. So we can do that. But I think if you want us to spend time pulling it all together and trying to harmonize what we've heard, we will be left in a situation where we might push the ball a little further down the road, but we'll still have a ways to go at our next round. So as Jeff mentioned, we can spend the next hour, if you want, of kind of walking through some of these a little further and trying to see if we can tease out some some more direction. Or I would suggest continuing it for a shorter period of time to have that conversation and get a little further direction from you rather than just sending off, sending us off to kind of repackage it all.
Mr. Cooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I as usual, I listen carefully to suggestions put forth by Mr. Tuttle. And what I would like to see, and it would be a short time, I think, for staff to consider this, is if they could take the various suggestions and identify the conflicts so that the commission can just discuss and and vote on a direction. If there are three different ways of approaching something, we have those. And and we can all support the ones we want or have a discussion about it. But to start that now, I think would be a difficult task, given the time of day and the amount of issues that we've already tried to hone down. So but it will take a little work on the part of very capable, long-range planners to identify the real conflict points and say, how do you want to go on this?
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney, for that. I I completely agree with what you just said. And I'm really looking forward to staff giving the right, their find, their analysis of the situation so we have their input at the same time. Commissioner Bradley, I know you've been.
Oh, I said, I'm I'm brain dead. Actually, I don't know where this table is. Is this in the staff memo?
Commissioner Bradley through the chair, this is the Attachment A to the November twenty ninth, our first planning commission staff report. It's essentially a representative, well, it is the table of the project description from the EIR. So that was basically, you know, the starting point of the project description.
Okay, I didn't mean to go sideways on that. I I think we continue it and and we ask staff to do the best it can by outlining, maybe it's a three-columner thing with, you know, your staff memo or this, and then what we heard from the Commissioner Park, and then AAC is somewhere in the middle of it, and then a fourth column for decision. Because we should be making one soon. So I.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Bradley. So basically using this as a format, just expanding upon the format that we have on the screen.
Oh, Chair, just wrapping it up, whispering to to Mr. Tuttle here. I think where we're fir- firming up an idea is we would continue at the date we're looking at based on the schedule is March thirteenth. There, there's nothing on that date. But then the work product coming back would be coming back with these themes and where there's conflict and being able to present to the commission, here's the different conflict points or different threads. And where does the commission want us to go? And that will be the time we get the direction from the commission to start writing the ordinance. Well, we've already started, but firming up the ordinance based on direction from the commission.
That that's my understanding, Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Park?
I I think that makes sense. I think that Mr. Tuttle gave a a a a very realistic view of what what's involved. And it's and it's trying to mishmash a bunch of different things. But that's kind of what their job is. They'll do they'll do their best job possible. And 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 whatever you come up with will be appreciated. I'm not gonna ignore this for the next month. And I think Mr. Reed and I will will make an effort to make what we prepared more elaborate now that you got the basic concepts and and to make it more inclusive of of some of the recommendations of AAC and Vintners and so forth that that we didn't cover. You know, for example, I liked what Ms. Laszlo said about setbacks and making the winery ordinance sort of a something of a standard. I I heard a lot of good things public comment today, and I and I would incorporate him. So I think staff should do whatever it can do. I'm gonna work on it with Mr. Reed and 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 take the document we had, make it more elaborate. And I think we'll we'll get further down the road when we have that hearing. I I want to make one other point, then I want to make a motion. And that is that I I think you have a a good grasp of what we need to do, Commissioner Martinez or Chair Martinez, in that we want to compare what we've done to the original tables that made up the project description in the notice of preparation back in early twenty twenty-two. And I will, I very well remember those. And and that's been my effort, not to come up with something new, but to get back to that stuff. And so I'm I'm happy with that thought. But what I really want to do is make a motion to continue this to March, was it thirteen or sixteen?
Thirteen?
Thirteenth?
Okay, Commissioner Reed hasn't spoken yet, and I know his light's on. Okay, Commissioner Reed hasn't spoken yet, and I know his light's on.
Well, I would concur with Chair Martinez, Commissioner Cooney's suggestion, and Commissioner Park. I think if we were to sit here another hour or two this afternoon, I can't foresee us coming up with anything relatively substantive or useful. So I would support giving this to staff, letting staff do their best to consolidate it. And at each point of indecision or uncertainty, come back with options for that point. Give us the option of selecting what fits best and then coming up with a document that we can work with. Because I think the expectation certainly of the board of supervisors and generally the public is that at some point, we come up with a work product that we can vote up or down. And I think that's the most expeditious way to assist us in getting to that point.
So with that being, so can I accept that as a second to Commissioner Park's motion?
Yes.
Okay, and on consensus, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I want to say adjourn. I am going to say adjourn.
So Chair, hold on, Chair, sorry. Oh, it's-
Thank you.